Oh, oh. Yeah, I should be able to be there. I totally forgot.
I can look at it.
No. Oh, that's, you know what threw me off? I had to cancel my meeting so many times that I totally lost it. Yeah, a lot in the room. Yeah, I should come here and help.
You should.
Hi, how are you?
I'm here.
Jake Moore?
I've been doing that, too. I've been using my fireplace a lot.
I bet.
I hope so. The best, best thing I ever made was putting remote gas lights on.
Oh, awesome.
Because I don't have to get down on my hands and use a lighter.
Correct.
Yeah, right, yeah. Oh. It's crazy.
Hello, everyone. It is 7:00 PM, February 18th, 2025. We'll call the regular city council meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zanner, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Most gracious heavenly fathers, we thank you for this wonderful location that we have this evening. We pray for our council meetings. It will be going smooth like we did all our time. And we pray for our country, for our leaderships, and for our time, for our families, and be with us now and where we go down that we have. In Jesus' name and praise, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, relitigated justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Yeah.
Councilmember DiMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Shadler?
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. I think there were a couple of possible changes. Councilman Baker, did you have anything you wanted to address?
Yes, I was just thinking I would like to add a very, very, very brief just discussion concerning the Parks Commission. And my portion should take less than two minutes. So I think that would fall under item P, I believe.
All right. And then, Councilmember DiMonico, did you have a change you wanted to address?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if we could move just new business I up to, I'd say make that new business A, so that the ad hoc committee we appointed can, you know, present to us and then get out of here instead of waiting until then.
All right. And did anyone else have any other changes? Did we get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DiMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadler?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is not open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Here in East Point, resident, I'll say my three minutes in. I apologize, I have to leave. I can't stay for the meeting. First thing I want to start out with is it's February. And, you know, in roughly two months, we're going to be looking at Easter. And that's when, you know, a lot of people act on impulse and they get Easter bunnies for the kids, thinking, you know, oh, what a great idea it is. Wrong, it's a horrible idea. I've had rescue rabbits for over 30 years. I love them with all my heart and soul. I have just a plethora of experience with them in learning over the decades just how much care they require. I mean, you have to be hypervigilant when you have rabbits in your lives. They're not like cats or dogs. If they get sick, oh, let's see if they feel better the next day. They are also the third most abandoned animals in shelters. So, you know, I'm bringing this up now. I don't want to do like I've done in the years past and wait until maybe a meeting or two before Easter. It's like, no, I need to like start getting this out there now. Do not do this. They are not starter pets. They are not disposable. I don't care what animal you take into your life. If you're going to take on an animal, you take them for life or don't take them at all. I'm going to be talking more about this at future council meetings, but I quickly want to address some fantastic work the Karens are doing in Detroit. There was just a news story on the six o'clock news about dogs being left out in the freezing cold. They're on these tow chains, that's illegal. They're outside more than three hours in these frigid temps, that's illegal. They're down to skin and bones, that's illegal. That's going on in Detroit. Unfortunately, it's also spilling into the suburbs. So if you see anything going on with animals, they're out there barking away and nobody's bothering to let them in, call animal control, even if animal control's not available. Chief, please instruct the officers to go to the house anyways, not just drive down the street and go, well, I don't hear them, and they keep going because, you know, less than five minutes later, the dogs are still barking.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. You know, this, this isn't like decades ago. Oh, they're just an animal. Oh, they've got fur coats. Oh, you know, we grew up with dogs. Dogs always stayed outside. No. Nowadays, animals are considered family members. You would not chain your children, your hu- human children, outside like that. You wouldn't starve them. You wouldn't do any of the horrific things that you're doing to animals. And if you think that's okay to do that with two children, human children, something seriously wrong with you.
Thank you.
Get these animals inside. Call and report any cruelty and abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, everybody. David Radoy, representative, representative of Holistic Health Way, and one of the permit holders for the medical marijuana special land use permit. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today. I, I feel that I have gotten to know the city council over the many times I've had. I want to talk about the first reading of the ordinance. Just very briefly reviewing the ordinance, section 10 dash 277 subsection D. I believe could use just a small tweak in there when reading it regarding some ambiguity and what I perceive to be a typo in the ordinance that was put out. The final sentence of that indicates, indicates that an existing permit to operate at a provisioning center is defined in the MMFLA. When property renewed, will be designated as a provisioning center retailer permit. My belief is that the intention was for that to say when properly renewed. And so I, I think that's just a small typo that could be fixed pretty easily. Further, read, when reading that, I think it could also be misinterpreted that it would require the medical marijuana permit holder to operate for a full year and renew. So what I would ask for as far as a change, just a clarifying change, I don't believe that was the intention of the city when writing it, but it, it seems to, seems to be that it requires renewal, having time for renewal. And as you know, the permit holders, that would take like a whole nother year. So I would just ask that the language, if required, so when properly renewed, if required, would, would kind of fix that potential misinterpretation of what I, I believe the spirit of the language was trying to get at. One other request, and I believe that all the permit holders would have the same request, and we are together on this, is that we would request the original ordinance at the time it was passed, which was adopted into this ordinance, requires that the, all these permit holders close at 8:00 PM. Detroit allows them to be open until...
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you very much. Detroit allows them to be open until 10:00 PM. It puts the permit holders in the city of East Point at a competitive disadvantage and potentially East Point residents taking their money to Detroit rather than spending it in East Point. We would humbly request from the city allowance to stay open till 10:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and 11:00 PM Thursday through Saturday to allow a competitive advantage on the many stores in Detroit. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. And finally, I would just beg of the city council to pass the ordinance with those small changes. Thank you so much.
Oh, God. Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Aaron Guyer, and I am the attorney for Sharktail Inc. We are also one of your three provisioning center licensees. And I would echo the comments made by my colleague, Mr. Radoy. I believe also that we have the typo. And in discussions earlier with Mr. Albright, I believe also that there is the typo. But more to the point, Mr. Radoy talked about possibly modifying the ordinance to allow the facilities to stay out, to stay open later. In other words, what's happening is, under the proposed ordinance, facilities are allowed to operate between 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM. We have licenses available to our south in Detroit. We have licenses available to our north in Roseville. Both of them allow later hours. That is going to divert traffic away from this municipality. If we look at other situations, let's take a look perhaps, say, at the liquor industry. The Liquor Control Commission says that facilities can stay open until 2:00 AM. I'm not asking for anywhere close to that. We have an ordinance which says that facilities who sell liquor are allowed to stay open until 11:00 PM. And so I think in line with that, we would ask, again echoing the comments of Mr. Radoy, that we be allowed to stay open until, say, perhaps 10:00 PM during the heart of the week, say, from Sunday until Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, perhaps we could stay open until 11:00. Now, again, I wholeheartedly thank the council for bringing this to the forefront. This is in line with the will of the people. Seventy-five percent of the voting public want recreational marijuana. The benefits to the community are clear. We get money for every establishment.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. We have improvements to the property. We have each one of the applicants who are going well beyond that. In other words, one of the community benefits that we intend to provide to this community is a very nice basketball court in the park. And so when we put everything together, I think everyone comes out ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Brian Etzel, on behalf of one of the three medical permit holders, common citizen, I just want to concur in the comments of Brother Council on behalf of their clients and with respect to the hours of operation and with respect to the tweaks in, in terms of the language that needs to be cleaned up a bit. And then there's a third issue, though. The way it reads right now, medical holders would have to, even once they get their, their adult use permit, they would have to maintain that medical license indefinitely. As I think you know, in this process, the, we, we've provided a lot of information about trends in the cannabis industry in Michigan and how medical licenses have really become worthless in terms of the revenue they bring in with the onset of adult use. So we would at least ask that you consider that at some point, we not have to maintain both licenses because of the cost of doing so in terms of the state license fees and the like. So that would be the only additional issue I'd ask you to consider. But thank you for your diligence in, in, in hearing all the different input for and against on this issue, this important issue. And I commend you on how carefully you've approached the issue, and it's been very thoughtful. And I think it's, it's going to improve the community. And we're going to be able to have very good facilities that are going to complement what's going on here. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Dave, resident. Just hearing these three talk, wanted to step in and say that, please just get this passed. Like, it's been so many years and we've lost so much tax revenue to not having these recreational places in here. I'd really like to just see it happen. Outside of that, I'm also, I'm here specifically because I'm really interested in the social media policy that's getting suggested. I know that a lot of work has been put into that, and I know it's desperately needed. The city's outreach and communication through social media, even just on the website, has been pretty terrible for the 15 years that I've been here. I'd like to be able to get more information and share information with residents. So if we could do it solidly through a, through a well-developed policy, I'm here for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Just cautioning about the recreational marijuana. I know we originally said three licenses. Now it's four licenses. I understand the reasoning behind it. I see in the ordinance that you have, there is a, a little provision there that you have the discretion to either increase or decrease the number of licenses. I would ask that maybe you strike the increased part of it and, you know, have the discretion to decrease if necessary, if some of these don't work out, if things change. You know, the marijuana industry seems to be changing day by day. You know, you read in the paper that there's too much marijuana out there. The price is going down, the price is going up. You know, I think that there's a lot of issues down the road that hopefully we can safeguard ourselves against. I mean, we are still family town. And, you know, four licenses is more than what you originally wanted. And I think if we could maybe have some kind of provision to just leave it, leave it at that. We are a small town. I don't think that we need many more than that. And, you know, if there's some way to pass an ordinance to kind of make sure that they're in areas that aren't conflicting with schools and parks and neighborhoods and that, and we're going to be redoing our master plan this year. And I think the focus is in, about bringing in young families and that. And, you know, when you're looking at a city that has just as many dispensaries as they do grade schools, you know, it kind of sends a wrong message, I think. I have nothing against the marijuana. I, I know you've vetted these people, and I'm sure they're going to do good things for our city, but I'm just kind of cautioning not to let it get too much out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry, it was long time, East Point resident. I totally oppose of the spending the hours of marijuana of any sort. As the lady before me said, you got right up here, big time, family town. That within itself states volumes and what have you. There's the old cliche of saying that you give, you give them inch, they'll take a mile. So we've already seen a whole bunch of changes coming about and people, it's all about greed. There's a reason why it was outlawed before. They got, they, through legislation and through lobbying and all this and everything, got it to pass and accepting everything because of money and everything. And I've stated before, all money is not good money and what have you. We already got enough drugs out here on the street. The time is changing that we're living in. People's all on medication, drugs, and all type of stuff and what have you. We don't need to entertain any more of people's habits or their recreations, or whatever they want to do, to continue to indulge and what have you and put everybody else's safety and life at stake and everything and dealing with their mentalist and what have you because of drugs and what have you. And we can, with the times as they are, we can only see it get worse and worse and worse as time goes by and what have you. Anybody that's considering themselves, I know most people are not believers, but a lot of people consider themselves Christians and what have you and what have, and within that itself and everything would give a person to search their heart and to know that they are held to do the right thing if you're God-fearing at all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing the first hearing of the public is closed. Moving on to approval of the minutes for regular meeting minutes, February 4, 2025. Before seeking a motion, I, I would just note the owners of the Chiquinis were here in, on page four, pointed out to me, they thought the first sentence in the second to last paragraph that reads, "The current parallel parking does not meet the current ordinance or M dots design requirements." Thought that should just say ordinance, not M dots. They brought that up to me. I'm okay with striking or M dots. I don't think it makes a big difference, but I think that was our discussion, that they weren't wide enough for that. So would anyone be willing to make a motion with that change?
So moved with that change.
All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DiMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadler?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, we have no scheduled hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move on to reports from administration. City manager, Mariah Walton.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. First, I'd like to, I know it's been shared on social media with council and with the city, but we have appointed a fire chief. His name is Jason Clark. He's been with the East Point Fire Department for over 19 years. He has extensive experience in fire science, prevention, and safety. He also happens to be a registered nurse and is trained in tactical, trained as a tactical paramedic. He's had multiple lifesaving awards here, specifically in East Point, during his service, unit citations. He has really exemplified great service to the community, and I'm confident he'll continue to do the same. We have a promotion ceremony for him coming up. And then, of course, next week, the Neighborhood Watch meeting is coming up. So if you would like to meet him, please join us at Neighborhood Watch. We have a town hall for the East Point Police Department and Court Development coming up on March 4th at 6:00 PM before the next council meeting. So if you're interested in that design, the construction plans or some of the concerns that PD and court have with their current building, please stop out and join us. The State of the City is coming up on March 5th, where we will have Mayor Kleinfeld, the judge and superintendent of the school district there. That's at 11:30 in the morning. And the East Point Chamber, Chamber of Commerce actually has the ticket. So if you're interested, it sounds like all their tickets are going pretty fast. So if you're interested in joining us and hearing the State of East Point, please join us there. And we have a lot of construction coming up. It's coming to spring in East Point and spring in Michigan. So we see the construction barrel. So please be careful. We have water main that'll be going northbound Grashit and soon to be southbound Grashit. So this area will be under construction for the beginning of the spring. So please be careful, watch for workers, and drive the speed limit, please. I'm saying that for Chief Haynes. And with that, mayor and council, I can answer any questions you may have.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. Speaking of water mains, I saw that we did send a NICSOL alert out earlier, but I had a question because I saw that I got an email, but I used to get text messages also. Did something, and, and I talked to someone else, and they did not receive the alert. Did something happen with our list or something like that?
No, so it depends on what kind of emergency. So when we do like a snow emergency, it's like a high alert or a red alert in NICSOL, and that'll send like an email as well as a text message. If it's just like a warning, so like they're yellow labeled warning, it just sends like the email notification. So it depends on what level of severity the person that's sending the notification essentially assigns to, to it.
The user picks the level?
So whoever is actually sending the emergency, whoever the administrator is, so DPW that's actually sending it, if it's only impacting a smaller area, they typically only send it like as a warning. But then, like, the snow emergency that was, that would be called, we normally send that as like a red alert or a large storm that we're anticipating that's going to impact the whole city. And those usually do like the automatic text messages that go out.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, do we have an update on the parking for nine?
Is this the phase for?
Like the couple of motions we made at the last meeting?
I do not. We're actually meeting with Ryan Kern this week, so he'll be in actually tomorrow afternoon to talk in more depth. I know he was going to find out some more information from the state, and so we should have some information tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions? All right, moving on to the finance director's report, Mr. Blum.
I'll keep it short. I have nothing tonight.
All right, any questions? All right, city attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
I'm going to follow Mr. Blum's statement, and also I have nothing. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. We'll move on to new business, and we'll start with a discussion and potential adoption of proposed social media policy. We have Chelsea Adden and Alyssa Dyvold here. Would you like to sort of start us off?
Hello, everyone. I'm Chelsea. This is Alyssa. I don't know if you've met her. She's pretty cool. We are the resident contributors on the Social Media Policy Ad-Hoc Committee. So the committee was tasked with proposing a new social media policy for the city of East Point. And basically, at our first meeting, the members of the committee went around the table, and we mentioned the goals we hope this policy would achieve. We knew the policy would be complete when we fulfilled the following goals. We reviewed them also at the end of our time working together and feel that while some of the goals evolved, we, as we understood the scope of the project more, we have a policy that is empowering and motivating for all the people who will reference it and a policy that protects the users and the city. We strive to create a policy that empowers team members to create engaging content, has accountability written for all internal managers and contributors, includes workflows for seamless internal user transitions, sets clear guidelines that make reading and finding information easy both internally and for residents, is compliant with state retention laws and the First Amendment, and finally, sets clear lines of what the city can and cannot do to protect from lawsuits. So we met 10 times as a committee and reviewed social media policies from at least 10 other communities. Additionally, Alyssa and I met about six times to ensure the policy was thoughtfully and thoroughly implemented. Additionally, Alyssa and I met about six times to ensure the policy was thoughtfully and thoroughly written. Both Alyssa and I have extensive experience using social media for government and small businesses as well as creating directive documents to build systems to create efficiency. All this hard work from this dedicated committee has resulted in a social media policy that provides a framework and expectations for establishing, overseeing, moderating and using social media platforms. This policy also establishes social media public engagement standards and personal use of social media by employees and other affiliated, others affiliated with the city of East Point. This policy was created to facilitate in an empowering and motivating way effective use of all social media accounts associated with the city. Third-party social media platforms are effective resources for sharing information and outreach with the community. Likewise, public engagement platforms for civic participation have become valuable resources for obtaining feedback and facilitating a two-way dialogue with residents, stakeholders and visitors. To address the fast-changing landscape of the internet and how residents communicate and obtain information online, the city encourages the use of social media to reach a broader audience to further the mission and goals of the city and the objectives of its departments were appropriate. The intended purpose behind creating the city's social media sites is to disseminate information from the city about the city to its residents. Additionally, increase transparency, engage residents and/or encourage resident participation in the affairs of local government. All such platforms and components are governed by this policy, which is designed to provide standards and procedures for the appropriate use of social media for city business. This policy also covers the use of social media by city employees outside of their job scope and responsibilities as well as outlining public engagement standards for public comments. Thank you. So additionally, you'll see in the packet that we included some supporting documents that we created, that we would like included in the adoption of this policy. Most of the documents created are in direct reference to non-existent documents such as the Social Media Action Plan, which is an application of sorts for all departments and boards and commissions to complete to continue having a social media presence. The main goal of this document is to help the users understand scope and assist with organization. We have also suggested a quarterly audit and made that suggested document. As well, we included a document of additional recommendations. We make these recommendations based on both of our experiences in this field, items noticed from other communities' policies and noting areas for improvement in East Point's digital presence. Importantly, this final document includes a compliance calendar because we recognize this is a large policy and the city administration, especially the community engagement manager, needs time to bring all of the city's digital presence into compliance. In conclusion, this new social media policy was thoughtfully and thoroughly written by a team that included Mayor Kleinfeld, Councilman Curly, Randy Blum, Rich Albright, Alyssa Dybald and myself. We appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this important project and hope that the city council passes this policy tonight. Thank you.
All right.
It's been a long time since I've publicly spoken.
Mr. Mayor, just to let the folks know that are here and watching, the committee did an incredible job. This, this document wasn't just put together in one or two meetings. And I've got to say, the two young ladies standing up there were the cartwheel. They were the, they were the energy and I am so happy to be with that. But they did an incredible job with the details and you could, you can't be wrong with a document like this. There has to be legal discussions and searching for legal things for them. So God bless you guys and thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So I do wanna say thank you to Rich and Randy for being on the committee as well and especially, thank you, Alyssa, especially Chelsea, though. I don't think we ever officially appointed her the chair of the committee, but she basically took it on and prepared all the documents, agendas and guided the discussion from start to finish and greatly appreciated. Both of you spent a lot of time on it. So I would recommend adopting the policy as presented.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of questions. Well, first off, I would thank everybody that contributed and put in the work and, and everything, putting this document together. But I was reading over it. There were a couple of questions that I had and it's just more so to make sure we're protecting ourselves as a council. I, I definitely believe in having that First Amendment right to say what you need to say or whatever and not trying to restrict that. But some of the concerns that I had were, I think it might, and somebody can help me out from administration, but I think that some of these kinda overlap with some civil service things because some of the things that were listed as far as not following the policy can lead up to, you know, it's certain disciplinary actions and then lead up to, I believe it's a discharge. And so I, I just don't believe that we as a council can recommend that because there are procedures in place and there are some civil service matters that we basically have no governance over. And so I just kinda wanna be sure that we're not asking to do something or trying to implement something that we can't as a council do. The other thing that I, that I looked at was, I think it was one part, one part that said, recommended hiring somebody part-time, basically proofreading so that the community engagement manager would basically oversee all the social media pages or platforms or whatever and that there will be a part-time person. But I wouldn't really feel comfortable creating a part-time position for that. And I think also too, I know there were some requirements as to how frequently the manager of said pages would basically go back and review. But I think we need to be sure that that person either can do it or be sure whether or not they can or can't do it because, you know, I don't know the scope of what their day-to-day work is. So for instance, if it was the community engagement manager, and I don't know, because I know one place it said community engagement manager and then one was like the social media manager, I think is how it was worded. And I don't know if we're using it interchangeably or if it's two different people, so I, I don't know.
It's, it's kind of meant to be vague.
Okay.
In case there's a change in
Okay.
the job title, so it's whoever is managing the social media.
Thank you. And I, I guess if indeed, and I'll just say the community engagement manager as of right now, I know that she has other responsibilities. I can't outline what they all are because I don't, I don't work here day-to-day. So, but I wanna be sure that we're not putting something forward saying that she has to do this at these intervals of time and it just may not fall within the scope of her ability or based off of whatever her other job requirements are, especially like when you get to like the master plan and that and the community engagement aspect that she has to focus on, she may not have that time to devote to it like that, so.
Can you, could you share which, where you're specifically talking about a task that you don't think she'll have time to do on a regular basis?
Well, hang on, I gotta find it 'cause I made little notes, but.
And I can speak to the discharge comment. So the, on page ten of the actual policy, it says failure to comply with this social media policy may be grounds for discipline action up to and including discharge. In addition, city reports all illegal activities to the appropriate law enforcement authorities. So I think may, I think is a very, very important, very legal word to include there, that it is a tool that city admin could use if the policy is not being followed, if the chain of command feels it is necessary to use this, not following this policy in how someone is managing the social media. But I think that may, it allows it, it does not require it.
And I, I understand that. And I guess I'm trying to make sure just from this seat here that I'm not saying something or doing something that I don't have the right to implement. And I, I understand the wording there, but I'd just like to move cautiously, especially when it comes to, I'll, I'll use a term 'cause I'm talking about myself. I don't wanna micromanage anybody. So I wanna be sure that I'm not saying, yes, let's do this and then that's a form of overreaching and I don't have the ability to do it. So that's, that's really where my concern is. You know, I know that, and correct me if I say this wrong, but I know between department heads and city manager, they have the governance over the people that they employ or the people that work under them. And so I believe that they should still be allowed to do that, but I don't believe it's within my scope to tell them how to do that. And I, and maybe that's a very technical thing, but I kinda, I'm a, I'm a union worker and I'm big on very technical things. Contracts are spelled out like that. And so even to implement this policy, to say that we can do that, if it's not within my rights to do it, I don't wanna push that forward. And, you know, administration can tell me if they have any concerns with that or, you know, you know, they can state it better than I can. I'm, I'm hoping I'm asking it clear enough, you know. But I, I just wanna make sure that I'm not saying that, hey, this can happen or you should do that or we gotta implement a policy where you can discipline like this because I don't believe it falls within my rights to tell anybody, the department head director or whatever, how to discipline anybody. So that's where I, I just move cautiously.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
And just in response to that, overall, we regularly, regularly referred to Rich and other members of council, Mayor Kleinfeld, Councilman Curly, about making sure that this policy was passable as well as enforceable. So if anybody else has anything to add in their perspective.
Ms. Albright, would you be able to speak to that?
Back in, and those are certainly all valid concerns, but back in December, I did forward a copy of the proposed social media policy to the city's Labor Council with emphasis on that section seven to make sure that he did not see anything wrong with that section. And I did not receive any negative feedback from Mr. Forme. Thank you.
Okay. And I don't know, I may be asking you to recall what he said. Did he, did you get anything specifically from him that says yea or nay or?
No, I, I just, I said, if you see any problems or anything in there that runs afoul of labor practices, rules, regulations, please let me know. And he did not respond to that, so.
So I guess basically for me, I would feel a little more comfortable if I had a definite one way or the other in that regard. And again, it's not to negate anything that was done 'cause I know that was a lot of work. I know, I remember the committee was created and you guys, you know, have been meeting faithfully. But I, I just, I would feel more care, I would feel better knowing that we're not overstepping our boundaries in regards to labor matters. You know, there, there were some other things too. I know that there was a, there was talking, oh, I'm sorry. Go back to your, your question about, I think it was on page five where it says like for the, page five, second C, where it says for the purpose of this policy active refers to, oh, I'm sorry, no, that's where you're talking about page being active. But I think that, I just had it and I apologize. But somewhere in there, it was saying that I think once a week,
You're in the right spot.
they want her to manage the page or basically be sure that everybody's engaging. And I think that's a little funny to me because our boards and commissions, so let's say I'm liaison to Parks Commission, they meet once a month. I think for them to have to post weekly might be a bit much just because they're meeting only once a month. And then sometimes, there's been some meetings where we've had to reschedule. So I, I think, you know, I, I would hate to see a page deactivated just because there was nothing to post or there was no event scheduled, especially due to like changes in weather, like or seasons. In the wintertime, there's not a whole lot going on with the parks, you know, there's not a lot of events. So I wouldn't wanna see a page deactivated because of that. It doesn't mean that they're not engaging, it's just maybe nothing new to report, you know.
I think that's a really valid comment, but looking at the pages that do exist, which is in the Additional Recommendations document, the only two pages that I think would be potentially in like the not engaging part is the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission and Beautification. Parks doesn't have a page right now, but all of the other pages, library, public safety, animal control, and then like the actual city are like posting a bunch every day. So it's really just those two commissions. And I think that if they are kind of empowered and told like, hey, you have this thing, you have this platform, please use it. And I think that's part of what Chelsea was talking about at the beginning about the empowerment factor. And we can, and the policy kind of explains like why that's good to be posting more frequently. Four times a month, I don't think is that crazy or like, and 'cause it's not, that wouldn't be the community engagement manager or manager of social media. That really should be a board or commission member. And that could be like Beautification could be posting like once a week, like recycling Tuesday tips or something like that. And I know the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission has previously been like super, super active and they kinda ebb and flow based on the month. I know they're posting a lot right now with Black History Month and it's super great. So I think if we encourage through this policy, the commission members to be just like a touch more active, I think it would make a huge difference in the communication we have with the residents.
And, and yeah, and I'm not, I'm not so dogmatic about that. But it was just something that I kinda looked at. And you know, I'm a guy of a certain age, so you know, my social media presence is not the same as some others. So I'm just being honest about that. So that's why I ask, and I guess, you know, if that's up to the discretion of the, the manager of the pages, like say, okay, hey, I understand, you know, we have people that are Rob's age that may not be quite as savvy on social media, have quite the presence. So we'll give him a little bit of grace and, you know, maybe three times a month or twice a month or something. But those were, those were some of the biggest concerns that I had. And then one was like the hiring of part-time person. You know, I think that that's, I think that would be a good discussion with administration to see if that's feasible or not. Also, if those who, whoever, like how would they delegate the management of those pages? And those, those questions, I just don't, I don't have the answer to.
And I don't know that we necessarily really do 'cause obviously we're not here on the day-to-day either. We just know that like best practices is the person creating should not be the post person posting because we have seen a lot of errors, both in our like personal, professional lives and with the city of East Point's page. And quite frankly, we did review the current job description for the community engagement manager and there is a lot on that woman's plate. There really is. And so this isn't, is not our intention to put more, but recognizing that like we need another body.
No, I, I, I understand. Look, I'm a, I'm a, a union guy, so to me, if, if the numbers are there, you can never have too many people.
And maybe this helps you guys in your next budget that like maybe you need another body.
Yeah, and then the, the last thing is I, and I appreciate the, the feedback back, you know, dialogue back and forth, was the, and this one might be a over my head technical question, but the retention of like information on the pages and then there was talk of transitioning to, you know, kind of a more uniform format for the respective pages. But I, I just wondered what the cost of that is. And I, I know anything city related should be, can possibly be foiled, but is there a cost that's associated with trying to retain this information? And then, you know, and if so, then do we have to now go out to bid for that and put out the R S P for it? You know, so like, I guess those would be more administrative questions that I.
I can help with that too, though. So my, like, how I would practically apply particularly the records retention stuff, you know, once it's on the internet, it's pretty much on the internet. If I think about Facebook specifically and when, let's just say, city admin posts something and then deletes it, that if, that, not great, right? But if they take a screenshot of that, free. But if they take a screenshot of that, free, pop it into a Word document, we've already got that. Um, and saves that as like, um, Facebook post February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five regarding. Emergency. And there are reasons why the city may want to remove a post. And I, to me, the only time is like when there's a crazy emergency, not, not a snow emergency, like something way. More intense than that. And then the, the emergency is no longer there. The police have determined that it would actually be better to remove this. Instead of continuing to freak people out. That would be a great time to save that, save it as a PDF. It wouldn't, that, and it wouldn't be happening that frequently, that we'd need more cloud storage, more data storage, anything like that. In terms of just regular records retention, it's on the internet, it exists, that's Facebook's problem. They have the storage capacity problem, so does TikTok, all that. So that's really on them. And it's really just about us as the city not deleting things without properly recording them so that they can be FOIA compliant.
I, I, I got what you're saying. Um, and that, that's kind of where I was like, okay. Yeah, and I, I guess I kind of wanted to just know a little more clarity of, of like how you guys envisioned that, so. Um, but really for me, I would feel more comfortable and, and please don't take this as anything against this, but. Because of the labor question, like, I would feel better hearing a direct answer, just to make sure we're moving properly. Um, and then also too, as a council, there has to be some governance over us as well, because like say for instance, like I can't. There has to be oversight over what I can say on any city page as well. Like I can't talk about anybody, any personnel's personal matters. Whether it be medical or employment matters or things that, that nature, things that are protected information, because. If that information is put out, then yes, I have to be held accountable for that. And I think if we're gonna hold. People or others accountable, then we also have to hold ourselves accountable too. So that would, and, and then I would feel a little more comfortable, you know, with moving forward with it, but. You know, those are my long and short, um, concerns. So I, I appreciate the, uh, feedback. Thank you.
So, uh, a lot of stuff that you just brought up were topics of discussion at some of our meetings, um, regarding FOIA. You know, we talked about kind of creating more record retention and decided. Let's, because the city is responsible to produce records that are in our possession. Let's not create, uh, a record keeping policy that essentially puts more onus on it. FOIA will be FOIA, what we do. You know, like, uh, Alyssa just said, deleting, that's like the one time we're kind of like keeping a record of stuff. Otherwise, it's up to Facebook. If someone wants to find something, they don't necessarily have to come to the city. They can go to Facebook. Regarding the labor question, I mean, we had some discussions on that. I don't, I, I think the point of checking in with, uh, Brandon Fornier. Was just to see if there was any concerns. Um, I don't, I don't have any concerns there. Uh, in terms of the policy having teeth for administration. Um, I think Chelsea, you're the one who said something to the effect of some of the language is meant to be vague. That was a discussion we had at length, because, uh, we didn't want to get into the position of. Dictating what is in someone's, uh, job description necessarily, just saying this is, this is the policy for the city. And really, it's going to be up to the city manager to designate who and what would do certain things. And it doesn't create a, uh, any sort of reprimand should the city manager choose to use it. This just gives our policy to point to and say, this is where this is coming from, this is what's, you know, I am citing you for. Um, the same if it would be in administrative rules and regulations or in ordinance or, uh. Uh, if it didn't come from us, if it, it might be something that's in a administrative order. So I'm comfortable with this. Uh, I will note that. I would be recommending that council adopt the policy. There is an attached memo, uh, in timeline and, and things like that. We also had a discussion on that, that there are some things the committee wanted to address or recommend. That might be outside of council, like something that council would approve as part of a policy, which is why those are separate documents. So I would, my recommendation would be adopt just the policy, I think. Administration's in receipt of the recommendations, but I, I think I wouldn't incorporate them as part of the policy. I think they're just, uh, sort of advice from a committee that sat and reviewed this stuff. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, yes, I just have a few notes if I can, Mayor. Um, so first, thank you guys. Um, I mean, the entire committee, it certainly takes, um, a lot of work and effort. Um, and I mean, creating a ten-page policy is certainly no small feat. So you guys have done an incredible job. And all the communities that you guys have read all of their policies, analyzed them and reached out to all of the resources. So I appreciate you guys' efforts. Um, I do have some questions in operating the account for several years. Um, all of the accounts, and I agree. None of the pages were created correctly. They've been, they've operated, um, inefficiently for a while. It's kind of just been pieced together. So it certainly was something that we needed, um, to tackle and it's certainly an overhaul of getting, um, into can, complete compliance. Of where we should be, right? Um, and so one of the things to know is that all of the accounts were created as pages. They're not created as a separate organization or a business page. Um, so to give like backstory. And I, I know Councilmember, um, DeMonico, you've stood behind me like on the account. In order for me or anyone else that manages the page to make any edits. I have to go through my personal page and then go to a separate, the East Point page to begin editing that page. Um, I'm listed as the administrator on the East Point page and I can invite someone else to their personal page to begin editing it. Um, a part of the concern is that's not how it should be created. Um, you also run into issues where there are staff that are uncomfortable with connecting their personal pages to it. Um, and getting to a point where we're in compliance means that we have to find a way to archive every single social media page that we have. And find a way to create a business page that's separate from people's personal accounts. I don't have a way to mandate. An employee to utilize their personal account to manage our social media, um, especially when the policy. Discusses governing that personal page. And so that's where we have to get to a point where we need to archive what we have. And create something so that we can be in compliance with this policy, which to me, the appropriate thing would to be create a business page. That can be monitored and that can can transition. So, I mean, even for example. I today, right now, um, could eliminate everyone that has access to the East Point page. I'm leaving employment on March sixth and the city would no longer have access to the Facebook page. No, I would never do that, don't worry. But my point is, the way that it's structured does not provide the security that this, this. Policy and what council has talked about creating, we can't do that without creating the correct type of page. Um, and so I think that's one of the things we need to consider is what does that overhaul look like in preserving our pa- pages? And getting to the point where they're all structured the same and we have that uniformity that has been discussed. Um, second, the policy also talks about, um, n- not being permitted to prov- uh, promote non-government entities. Um, I know that's a specific concern when it comes to economic development. Um, we've done incredible efforts and I, I know one of the favorite things and one of the things that we've had the most engagement on. Um, is highlighting the local businesses, especially during construction season. And so that's one of the things where we go out, we engage, we get the information about the businesses and we try to promote them. Because we know the construction is gonna hit them hard. Um, and so this policy restricts our ability to do that. So that would be one of my concerns, is not being able to promote a non-government entity, um, within this policy. Could you, could you point to what part of the policy states that? This is so much easier when you can just search and don't have print. So it says, ensure content only reflects the official positions of the organization regarding city employees' policies, programs, or practices. And opinions of practices of other public agencies. No, that's not it. Sorry, can you say what page and section you're on? I'm on page six. I'm trying to find where it says non-government entity.
Might be this that you're referring to, the content restrictions. Uh, that we might remove solicitations for commerce. Includes promotion or endorsement of any financial commercial or non-governmental entity. Is that what you're?
Yes, so do not post advertisements, prizes, promotions to a like page or giveaways. This includes promotions, endorsement of any financial commercial or non-governmental entity. So I understand the.
That's on the resident, not on the city.
No, yes, but it, it still reads the same, so we wouldn't be able to share or advertise anything that would be going on. Social media posting, authorized users contributing to the city's social media council follow these. And then it's number, which, again, I'm sorry. Public engagement expectations under purpose, so E. Oh, okay. Public engagement expect, expectations. So this is people.
This is not the administration.
Yeah, this is not the admini-, so specifically your example of your campaign of. Featuring nine-mile businesses, which was fantastic. That is not what we're referring to here. This is specifically referring to.
Joe Schmo can't pro- promote.
Like a spam.
Yeah.
A spam thing can't, yeah, or, um. And we're not specifically talking about like East Point. We're talking about like more spam bot. Kind of things which are a regular occurrence. So is that just like in comments? Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, part of that kind of restricts like the person's like freedom of speech of sharing something in comments. So that's a separate concern, but, um.
But that would be commercial and commercial is not have the same freedom of speech protections as a human does.
Does it?
No, it is different. Human and business has different speech protections.
Um, so I, I think, yeah.
Well, I, no, I know that was one of your concerns. I, I, I don't want to cut you off while you're going through them. Yeah, I, I will, I will note that we did talk a little bit about that. I think we even talked about promoting businesses specifically. This is, that's really just user content. It, it's under the same, uh, sort of categories of like hate speech or things like that, that. The city may remove these things, um, if it becomes pervasive. Uh, in the comments section, like someone just trying to hijack the city page for something unrelated, like the spam stuff. But I'm sorry, go ahead. You had a couple of things that you wanted to go through.
Um, the last one, um, really, one of the last primary things is just the documentation of account passwords. Which violates all of our IT practices. Um, but even like on the action plan form, it wants us to document the actual passwords to accounts. Um, and so I would certainly advise against that, as we don't do that for any of the systems that we operate and certainly open up. Um, risk of, of, um, spamming those accounts. So other than that, Mayor, that's all the feedback that I have at this time. May I respond to that? So my suggestion of including the login, thank you. Uh, the login information to the social media action plan form. Um, I believe it says in the policy that this form would be owned by the community engagement manager. Or the city manager, I can't remember specifically. And this would be like in a locked drawer and this is for when. There's a transition of people. This is meant to, having it be on, being on a piece of paper is meant to make. Life easier. If the city already has a like password storage situation, that is fantastic and. The, since this is a recommended document, this isn't part of the policy, you could adopt that and make that change.
I, I did have. Okay, this might be a very technical thing, so bear with me, but, um, Mayor, you had mentioned hate speech. Um, I know, and I know you have to, it has to be done delicately, but, um. There's no definition for what that is, and I think we can say that most of us know what that is, but. There's some subjectivity there. Um, so. It might be helpful to kind of give a overview without just, uh, specifically quoting something that would be to hate speech.
There is actually a UN definition of hate speech, but that whole line says, um, so the city reserves the right to reject or remove any of the following content. Bullet point one, hate speech, obscenities, or threats of violence, including language or links. So that is up to the discretion of the managers of the page, uh, but there is a UN definition of hate speech.
Um, and then one other thing that I, I, I remember, and a lot of this is just, I remember reading it, but I didn't highlight it. Um, is that I know that there was a suggestion or a requirement that employees. Identify themselves. And I think that. I think that there's a little bit of a conflict, I think, that I, I see, because like say for instance, uh. I'm a, I, I'm a city resident and I work for the City of East Point, I'm a resident. Well, as a resident, I'm allowed to engage just like any other resident. Um, I'm not speaking on behalf of the city, I'm speaking on what my experience is as a resident. So if I say that, you know, Randy Blum, uh, you know, threw his cup at me, you know, I'm speaking as a resident. I'm not saying, you know, he did it when I was paying my water bill, you know. Um, I'm not speaking as an employee of the city and saying, you know, this is what the city does, this is. Uh, as a resident, I'm just sharing my experience and. I think we have to be careful that we don't restrict any First Amendment rights to residents. Or people who want to comment on said pages, especially if they're not speaking on behalf of the city.
Yeah, I think that's that whole section, we had a lot of conversation about that, to really try to have employees recognize that. Like if you're posting as Sally, then you are Sally. But if you are posting as Sally comma manager of the DPW, then recognizing that there's a difference. And like when you are posting at, like, don't post things you're not supposed to, HIPAA, all that stuff, right? Um, but recognize that like people, like there is a difference and to respect that there is a difference. Is the, is kind of like the thirty thousand foot goal of that whole section is, don't post things. Professionally that you shouldn't and don't post things personally that you shouldn't in the opposite way.
I, I got you. Yeah, and, and I guess that's, you know, things happen. We had a, you know, September sixth is the day, so. The First Amendment stuff, so, uh.
I'm very sensitive to it too, I get it.
So I guess that's, that's pretty much all that I have. Um, again, like I had mentioned my, my question for the labor attorney. I'm just, I'm very big on having something specifically written and it's just, I'm kind of a stickler for that, because then that way there's no. Ambiguity, there is no confusion. It's just like this is either permissible or it's not permissible. And that to me is a big hangup, but, you know, I come from a union background, so I'm big on contract. And I'm, I'm big on specifications, so, uh, but that's all I have. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure, uh, and I do want to comment on, so we had a discussion about hate speech and what's, what does that mean? Um, and in that, because of that, uh, sort of question. Um, included in that, uh, subsection B, right after that sentence you were referring to. Um, we have content, or it states content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates hate or discrimination on the basis of any legally protected class by the state or federal law. So we basically said, instead of trying to define it here, pointing to state and federal law to say, it's already defined for us. We don't need to sort of reinvent the wheel on that, because it is complicated, so. Just wanted to point that out. That was a active discussion that took up, I think, one of our meetings, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, no more questions, but I did want to also say thank you though, because I know all of you spent a lot of time. Thank you, Chelsea, Alyssa, Randy, Rich, Councilman Curly, Mayor Kleinfeld. Thank you for putting a lot of time in on this. Uh, Councilman Baker, I think a, a lot of good questions and. Uh, I happen to be very close to one of the members, so I've heard of a lot of these concerns and know that they had the discussions on them. And I had some similar notes, actually, when I'm going through here. I'm like, oh yeah, I asked, um, Alyssa about this, you know, so. Um, definitely, uh, good. Um, I think with like any policy, it's not gonna be. Um, I think with like any policy, it's not going to be, well, even, I mean, like the US Constitution, right, is amended from time to time. I think this policy is very good, and we could adopt now. And if any labor issues come up after you talk to our labor attorney, um, we could at the future amend it, or any of the concerns from our city manager, Mariah. Um, we could, you know, adjust, um, in the future. I think we could at least pass this now, get going, and then make any adjustments in the future. But yeah, I think this is, uh, like a good policy to follow. Hopefully, you know, I think, uh, we'll, um, we'll have hopefully less issues, you know, going forward, um, and it'll be smoother. And, yeah, everything that you guys said at the very beginning of your presentation.
Don't forget, you're required to look at it every three years.
Right, I, I just kind of pushed that one to the side. So, so I will say this, if, I, I'm probably going to move in a no direction, but it's not because I don't think it's necessary. It's, it's my particulars, and it's just, but I don't want to, I, I, I do want you guys to know that the hard work is appreciated and noticed, so I just just say that.
Other than the, the particular labor question, is there anything else that we could clarify or consider amending to get a yes vote?
Um, that would be the big one, and then, uh, the, the other one that I don't know how easily done it is, is, is really suggesting that, um, uh, that a budget amendment occurred to hire someone part-time, just because I don't know that that's the best use of, uh, resources. Um, so that's kind of one of the other things that I'm kind of looking at. Um, and, uh, I am a little particular about the language of, and I understand may lead up to this as far as discipline goes, but I think for me, it just kind of feels like I'm overstepping. And so, uh, I know that some of that thing, those are administrative things slash civil service things. And for me, I, I can't do that with, with a good conscience. I feel like I'm overstepping my boundaries, and, and that is all. It, it, other than that, um, you know, I don't want you guys to think like, I'm like, oh no, I'm just against it. It's not that, it's, you know, as a union guy, and, and over twenty, over twenty years, it's, some, some things just need to be spelled out, and it's just a matter of protection. Um, and that's, that's just how it sits with me, so I just, but I do want to be honest about that.
Yeah, uh, just to, uh, respond to your, um, hiring of, uh, our recommendation to hire an additional part-time person, that is part of the memo recommendations that doesn't need to be adopted with the policy. So if the labor part wasn't in there, this is not something that you would need to like necessarily vote no on. It also, just as I said in my begin, at the beginning of our presentation, both Alyssa and I have many years of experience with social media, and we got to take a look at the community engagement manager's job description, and we know that she is stretched thin, and I know there was concerns about her ability to get things done that are in this very thorough policy. And having a part-time person that she can delegate to, um, is highly recommended, um, so that she has that support to get her job done for the city. So, that's all, thank you.
I, I appreciate that, and, and trust me, I, it's not a knock against anybody. It's just a, you know, I gotta go with my conscience on it, and I feel like I'm stepping in the wrong direction. I have to be honest about that. But it's, it's definitely not saying that I don't think that there's a necessity for a policy, you know, and, and- so yeah, I don't, please don't take it as a shot at anyone or at this document. It's just some particulars to, you know, with the way that I see it, and, you know, I'm just honest about how I, how I interpret what I'm reading, so, that's all.
I do want to add, so I know like end of this, like the committee kind of goes away, and I didn't talk to Chelsea about this ahead of time, but if city admin does have specific questions about the different platforms, and like how to merge things, and how to do some of that transitional stuff, I know I have a ton of experience with that, Chelsea has a ton of social media experience. So if there are questions that city admin has, like even though the committee won't exist anymore, I'm happy to come in and talk to anyone, um, at any time really, to try to, like, there's certain, like, I mean, Facebook changes every week, so, um, it's hard to keep up with. Um, I, I work really hard at it in my personal life, so if there are things that we could maybe help with, instead of you trying to figure it out on your own, I'm, I'm happy to do it, yeah.
Same, yeah, particularly facilitating the shift from getting accounts out of personal ownership. Um, and if you wanted to adopt the social media action plan, disseminating that and working with anyone who submits one to help them complete it and understand what they're filling out.
So, if I may jump in, um, if there aren't any specific questions that council, what I would, or council has left, what I would suggest is if someone wanted to make a motion to enact the policy, and then I would like to entertain a separate motion to receive and file, um, the memo with additional recommendations and, uh, documentation.
Did we have a motion on the table? I thought we did, but maybe not, okay.
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry. Motion support for the policy already?
Yeah, I think you motioned to adopt, yeah, adopt the policy. And I was just going to clarify, and then Councilman Curly, I think, already seconded?
Sure.
Um, and just that it replaces our 2019 one, right? I assume, I just wanted to make that clear, since we listed here.
Yeah, I think Mayor said he would recommend that we adopt it. I think that's what the, the little wording was, I think he said he would recommend that we, we would adopt it. And then Councilman Curly said he was second, but he didn't actually motion that.
Oh, okay.
I didn't think so either, I was like, did I make a motion?
Oh, okay, okay.
So that wasn't real?
So that way nobody can come back and say, it wasn't a motion.
Right.
All right, so I'll, I'll motion then, or we're waiting for a real motion?
Go ahead, make the motion.
And, and just before you do it, I think there's, uh, effective, whatever date's blank, if you want to plug in a date.
Oh, sure. Um, I assume today's fine. Uh, all right, then, yeah, I will, and you were, you were asking for two separate motions, one on the policy, one on the other document.
And receive and file the other document.
Okay, I'll motion that we adopt the policy here, uh, the social media policy, um, effective today, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that it replaces our, um, previously adopted policy from April sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
Support.
All right, any more questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'll motion that we accept the other three documents, uh, from the committee, the social media East Point additional recommendations, the City of East Point social media action plan form, and the City of East Point quarterly social media audit.
Support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to presentation discussion of non-union and court compensation study. And then, uh, do we have someone here to present that? Oh, uh, if you'd like to come up and-
Evening.
Can I just kick it over to you?
Nice to be here. Interesting discussion, discussions. This may not be quite so exciting, right? This is all about compensation. Um, no, seriously, do appreciate the chance to be here tonight. I understand you have our report, uh, with all the detail. So I don't know that we will take you through all of it. Um, you can certainly ask any questions you have, but I thought at least I could give you an overview um, of what we did, and maybe more, as importantly, what we were recommending for the city. Um, so this was a review to look at all the non-union positions in the city, uh, including looking at the marketplace, which, uh, a lot of time was spent on. Uh, we actually went through multiple rounds of surveys and collecting data from various sources to get as rich a picture as possible of what's the municipal market. So that was a big part of our work. We also had the good pleasure and opportunity to interview all the staff that were to be impacted or potentially impacted by this. And that helped us better understand their jobs, what they do, in terms of responsibilities. All important information for us to ultimately come up with our recommend, recommendations for you. So we did a survey, um, and we, we conducted multiple surveys. We also took advantage of the Michigan Municipal League's database. Uh, they have lots of information, and we found other surveys from, from different sources in the public library field, uh, separate magistrate court survey, um, Combe County Animal Control's office, City of Dearborn's website, and on and on it goes. But we spent a lot of time, in fact, that had a lot to do with why didn't you get this job done sooner? Which Mariah frequently asked me, probably not frequently enough, but, um, we probably spent, um, elapsed time. The survey was supposed to take a month, it took three, and that's why, because we kept going back to try to get more data. Uh, again, to get as complete a picture as possible. From that, we did a comparative analysis, so how do we stack up with the market? We used all that information to come up with a recommended new updated salary schedule or salary structure for the city, um, including where did the jobs fall, or the position, where would they be placed in this new schedule? Um, and all that was put together, um, and included in, in the document that you have. We were also asked to look at the benefits provided to the city, which we did. Um, and some thoughts finally in this report about how do we implement, and how do we manage this on an ongoing basis? Um, so that's kind of a quick overview of what we did. Maybe we could hit some highlights for you, if you'd like. Um, first of all, what did we learn? So how do we stack up, right? How competitive are we with the market? Um, and so there's really two different sets of information. One is what do we pay our staff today? And the other is, we have a pay structure now that has salary ranges, and how do those ranges compare with ranges that are in other municipalities? So when we looked at how we pay our staff, you're doing pretty well. Um, I think you're about three percent above the middle of the market. And I, you're going to hear that comment a couple of times, from that expression, the middle of the market. So much of our analysis was centered around looking at the fiftieth percentile, or the median, um, with the thought being that we at least ought to know where that number is, and maybe that's a good strategy for us. I worked with lots of municipalities, and their thought is at least we want to be in the middle of the market. We don't want to be the highest paid, we can't afford to be the highest paid. We surely don't want to be the lowest paid, because we're not going to be competitive enough to attract and retain staff. So we took that same approach in this study. Um, we looked at the, at the fiftieth percentile, or the median of the market. And when we do that, we find that your salary levels today of incumbents is competitive. It's just around a little above the middle of the market. Your salary ranges for the positions, however, aren't so competitive. And in fact, the minimum, ranges have minimums and maximums, right? At the low end of your ranges, um, you're fifteen percent below the market. And at the high end of your ranges, you're about five percent below, or four or five percent below. The market, again, is the middle of the market, so just to emphasize that. So we learned that from this comparative analysis. Um, we did, we, as I suggested, we put together a new pay structure, and this pay structure is going to have twelve pay grades, twelve levels. I think you have nine today, although this structure also includes the position of city manager, which your other structure did not. So we, we put that job in, if you want to put it as part of, as part of your pay system for the non-union group. So there are going to be twelve grades. We have a consistent difference from one grade to the next, and it's ten percent. So as we go up from grade six to grade seven, grade seven will pay, will have a higher range of ten percent than, than the, than the lower grade, immediately lower grade. Uh, we also put together a step schedule, uh, because the, the question becomes, so now we have, we have these grades, and we have ranges, um, how does one move through those ranges? And so we've suggested that you adopt, which is the most typical, and we think the most effective way to help you as an organization make pay decisions every year, is to have this kind of salary progression path, or, or step plan, if you will. So we've, we've developed those, and so each level will have twelve steps, and they'll be two and a half percent apart from one, so every year there'd be a two and a half percent increment or progression to be considered, uh, for employees. Which overall makes these ranges like thirty-one percent wide. And I know that doesn't sound very exciting, but for compensation geeks, that's kind of important. Like your ranges today are too wide, in our opinion. They're like thirty-five or thirty-six percent wide. The market's closer to the twenty-five percent, and so we landed at thirty, um, thirty-one, just to, just to come down from your ranges and up a little bit from the market. Um, again, to try to help, help us, help you in terms particularly of implementation. So we have a new pay structure. Um, the midpoints of the pay structure are right at the middle of the market. That's what we wanted to do, that was our goal for you. You could decide to be more competitive or less, but what we're recommending is let's be there in the middle of the market. So you will now have, in these twelve grades and these ranges, you will have, those ranges will be for, by position, will ultimately on an overall basis be right there in the middle of the market. And that, and again, that's the strategy that we, that we suggested, um, that you, that you might wish to adopt. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a meaningful adjustment to your midpoints of your ranges that you have today. Um, but we think it's the right spot to be, and again, our goal was to help you, help you get, get to the middle of the market. And so in, in your document, your report, and we're happy to go through whatever details you'd like, there's the recommended salary structure, um, compares to what you have today, compares to the market, um, and, and shows you where all the positions would fall, uh, in this new pay structure. And so, um, I think it's, it's important to think about this as not a one-time study, but this is in fact a system for you to use on an ongoing basis. And so the market's going to keep moving, and so you got to keep moving as well. If you want to stay in the middle of the market, you're going to have to adjust your ranges. Um, in fact, you should look at them annually. Um, I have many municipal clients that call me once a year and say, how much is the market moving? And so we give them that information, because we have it, and they decide if they can afford to move the ranges that much, um, and if they can, they normally will. So on an annual review basis, you should look at your salary ranges in this, this pay structure we're recommending, um, and be prepared, if you can, to keep those competitive. And that's going to mean looking at adjusting them on a regular basis. Um, in addition, we have some thoughts in here about, uh, what happens if a, you create a new position? So what do we, how do we place it in the structure? And you should go out and get market data, and you should figure out where that, what that market data tells you, and now you've got these twelve, that's kind of your playground, if you think of, you got twelve grades to work with, that's plenty. And so put the job in one of those twelve grades, um, and let the market data help you, among other things. And when you hire new people, um, what step do we place them on? Should have a lot to do with their experience and background and credentials, and also a lot to do with what do we pay people today? So we don't want the new hire to come in at a higher step with less experience than someone that's already, um, here at the city and working. So you'll need to think about, from an internal equity standpoint, um, how, how, how we pay people today compared to, uh, what, where we want to place the new hire. So those are just some basic fundamentals. Again, it's about being a system, um, not simply a one-time study that says, how do we stack up, stack up in the marketplace? Um, so those are highlights, really quick highlights, and I would be more than happy, I mean, there's over forty pages here of data, be more than happy to go through any of it, all of it, um, if you'd like, or have any questions. I think you've been doing a good job with the, with the pay structure, hats off to you. And it was, I think it's an appropriate thing to every now and then take this more thorough- was, I think it's an appropriate thing to every now and then take this more thorough look at the marketplace and make sure we're, you know, we're where we think we need to be.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sure, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for coming out and showing us this. Good to see, you know, how we fare with other municipalities, and good to see that we're a little above on the one, you know, middle of the market, like you said, and need to improve on other areas, and looks like hopefully we will shortly here. One question maybe I had was, how do you compare some of the positions, I guess, like at different communities, it's not apples to apples, right? I guess the very first one I saw, looking at it, right, our city manager is also the city clerk, like in the charter.
Right.
And then I saw that you have some communities where you're showing, here's what the city manager makes, here's what the city clerk makes, but some cities, it's two separate positions. Here it's the same person. And then like with that in mind, at least, we've got then our deputy city clerk. How come she wouldn't be, you know, if we're doing apples to apples or apples and oranges here, how you're looking at it, would she be like the city clerk instead of deputy city clerk? Like, how do you, you know, do that with all these different communities?
Well, yeah, it's a great, great comment, and I probably should have said that at the beginning, but no two municipalities are alike, and they're all organized a bit differently in how they allocate responsibilities and tasks. And so it is not an exact science, it's an art, is one way to look at it, and it really is, in terms of trying to compare one job to another. And you do have sort of an interesting dynamic with your city manager, who also has these other responsibilities. And we did provide that data to show you, here's what the city manager market is as a city manager, and here's what a clerk makes, and here's what I think also the director of personnel is another responsibility, at least of your current city manager. So we provided you with that data, and ultimately our conclusion was, in terms of looking at your city manager position, is that we should pay based upon the city manager data, and that's what led us to our recommendation. But you could say, well, shouldn't they get paid for being a city manager, plus being a clerk, plus being a, well, in theory, that may be right, but in reality, there's only so many hours, and so at a day and a job. I think what you might say is, we ask a little bit more of our city manager, maybe we should pay a little more than the quote-unquote "the middle of the market" from that data, and that would be fine to do. I think when we look at that, we didn't do that in our recommendation, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't or couldn't, but it's a good point to bring up.
And if I can chime in too, I think part of the process was also during the interviews, and so understanding that the manager's office still has functions that are associated with the clerk's function, that do not go to the clerk's office or the deputy clerk. And so it's weighing out from the interviews what responsibilities each position actually holds, but it is different in every community in terms of how the position and what they're responsible for in East Point and other communities.
Right. Yeah, it's not that precise and exact, unfortunately, but that's, and so when we did the survey work, we sent to those municipalities we targeted a description of, here's the job at East Point, do you have one comparable, not exact, because no one does, but, and if so, then please, what's the title you use and what's the pay level? And that's sort of our best effort. And then the Michigan Municipal League's database, which we also use, provides a short, but summary of, this is kind of the essence of the job, and you try to work with all that as best you can. And then I think in the end, you have to make your own decisions. And so as to what is appropriate for us, so here's the data, here's our view of how well these jobs match with the market, or our job matches with the market, and here's what we think we should do. And in some cases, there was decisions made to pay a little more than the market or not, depending upon that kind of analysis. So a lot went into it, and by the way, we didn't do this in a vacuum. Obviously, we pulled together all the data, and we built the structure, but we had lots of conversation, as we should, with administration as to, so what do you think about if we put this job in this grade and that's what the market says? Does that feel right or not? And all of that was part of the process.
Thank you.
Sorry, that wasn't a short answer, was it?
Well, I kind of figured that would be the case, just was kind of curious as to your thinking on that. And then also, how did you come to the last page in our packet here? Looks like it's maybe immediately after your PDF. How did you come up with the City of East Point Wage Study Proposal? That's at the end there.
That was from administration. Yep, so I detailed that in the memo. So we went through, based on the information that was presented, and evaluated, essentially in adopting, if council wanted to move forward with adopting the structure. So historically in East Point, we have this kind of outdated grade scale with these wide ranges of like 30% in between them. And so if council wanted to move forward with adopting the scale along with step increases instead of just like the, you know, July 1st cost of living increases, we would essentially have to start at some point of placing employees that we currently have in a grade step. And so that's what we did to understand what that financial impact would be in adopting this. And so that's where Randy did his awesome Excel work here, and placed the people into the appropriate grade step and on the appropriate scale of where they're currently at on the updated scale. So that's kind of what shows you what the financial impact would be if we were to adopt this and place them in those appropriate steps.
Okay. Yeah, I think the steps are a fantastic idea for the, you know, wage spreadsheet or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it really is the right way. It's gonna make everybody's life easier. It's some transparency for employees, it makes it easier for these financial people like to worry about budgets and things like that, and for you ultimately to know what's coming. It's important, in our view anyway, is that those steps are not entitlements, they have to be earned. And so in fact, every year, someone has to be performing at an appropriate level. I mean, if they're struggling, you shouldn't give them a step increase, right? They have to be doing a good job. If they're doing a good job and the city has the financial resources, because if you can't afford it, then you shouldn't do it. So it's, can the city afford it? And in fact, is employee earned it? And then they should be eligible for that step increase. In addition, those steps should be looked at every year, as I mentioned earlier, because they should arguably go up, and should go up, in terms of value, if the market's moving up. So if the job is worth more tomorrow in the marketplace, we want to stay in the middle of the market or wherever, we've got to keep moving. So there's really two parts to it. And I oftentimes get asked, well, what if we can't afford to do both? What if we can't give this step increase that was earned by performance and move the step value up? So if you had to pick, I'd move the step value up. I'd forego the step increase, because you ought to keep your ranges competitive with the market. And that sometimes happens for municipal organizations in terms of, you know, we've got some financial challenges this particular year. But hopefully, in most years, which is true of the clients we've worked with for many decades now, they can make both those increases work, the adjustment to the scale as well as the, as well as the step.
Yeah, I just asked that, because in one of your slides, you just said to implement the proposed salary structure, staff should be placed in the grade aligned with their position and to the step closest but not less than their salary level. So yeah, I was just asking, because a couple, it looks like they're not all consistent to that statement.
And so that was sort of the minimum you should do, get them on the schedule, you don't want them to back up, right? We can't put them on a step and have them take a pay cut. So that was, that was the kind of the minimum acceptable. But I know administration worked on this and gave good, appropriate thought to, but what about one's tenure and experience, et cetera, and how long have they been in their role? And shouldn't that be, and I know that was, again, we didn't make those decisions, but I've talked to the city manager, and she indicated those are some of the things that they thought about, which they should.
And if I can add too, similar to what Jeff has mentioned, it's really getting away from, like, the COMC OLA, the cost of living adjustments, and really driving on performance. And so the recommendation that is here is essentially the increase that would normally take place, or what would be requested from administration to take place in July. These would be the permanent wages for the employees until next July. This would allow the opportunity, which we implemented performance reviews, which have not historically been done, but we implemented them and require them since 2022. And so this would allow for every single employee that we have to have a performance review and to have the evaluation in terms of if they have earned a step increase. And so that will kind of allow us a little bit more than a year to ensure that one is on file as of July 1st, and we can go through HR, essentially in document, who will be moving forward on a step increase. And as Jeff has already mentioned, it helps with budget and preparing for projections versus just that wide range. And another piece in terms of, I guess, two other things from the report, I think a big piece that's also missing is the education and experience, as Jeff had mentioned, where we can look at other positions and what other people have, and Randy, I hope you're okay with me mentioning this, but there's nothing that's gonna account for, like, say, a finance director. The city would not be able to hire a finance director with over 25 years of experience at the wage that Randy's currently paid. And so that's what we take into account, where he's moved into the correct range on this scale, but when it comes to a step increase, should he start at the step one? Is that appropriate for somebody that has over 25 years of finance experience? In my recommendation and HR experience, it's not fair. And so I think we have to accommodate that, and even though, you know, in the report and the data shows, you know, that it has to adjust, I also think we have to take into account the experience and the education. So there are a few positions that have been historically in the wrong category or haven't been paid what the market says they should be paid, and so there are those adjustments that need to take place. And even highlighting the incumbent salary levels, I think we also have to take into account that that's overall for every position. Every position that we have, this number, 103.8%, that doesn't mean that every employee in the city is overpaid 3.8%. That's in general with every single employee that we have. And if you look at the data that is presented, most of those employees are not actual city employees, the court personnel that have the increased wages. And so that evaluation is a summary of all non-union and court personnel. City employees are not overpaid the 3.8%, but that's an average over every position that was evaluated.
Yeah, it's a good point to bring up, and we did include the court in this, and in fact, we put them in a pay grade. So, I mean, I don't know, and I know there are a number of municipalities where they keep that separate, I don't know that there's any reason to do that. You got a pay system and a methodology, it's tied to market, you got a structure, that's why I'd put the city manager's job in there as well. It all makes things easier, more consistent, we treat everyone the same, and so in fact, we've attempted to take the court positions, and they are in a pay grade in this new updated structure, again, based on market data and our understanding of the responsibilities of those jobs.
I think we need a grade zero for city council, about $5,000 a year.
We didn't look at the council, but we certainly could.
We got a whole board that says.
One other quick thing before I forget, we also, I mentioned you looked at your benefits, and they looked, by the way, fine. We took advantage of a survey done by the league, Michigan Municipal League, it's like 230 communities around the state, and so we looked at your paid leave time, and we looked at your medical health insurance and your retirement plan, and again, that's in the report, and if you looked at that data, you would say, I think you're doing fine. You're right, you're right in line with what the market's doing. You're not way out in one way or the other, you're pretty much in the middle, and again, I don't think that's a bad place to be.
I had a quick question too. I was looking at the police chief and the deputy police chief, those positions. I mean, gosh, there's only a $900 difference. I was pretty shocked to see that, because personally, I don't know if there'd be any point in becoming a police chief for $900. Just my two cents.
No, and so if you look at the data, and I did, I've spent a lot of time on this, by the way, I'm glad you brought, most communities will pay the police chief 10% or so more. And that's, by the way, how we've set it up in your new structure, from a pay grade standpoint. So the police chief's in a higher grade than the, than the, than the, and should be. And so that's, but now you're referring to what the incumbent actually makes, right?
Yes, I am, because like I said, I was quite surprised to see there's only a $909 difference.
Right.
And that's surprising, especially for somebody in that position, I mean, you know.
And if I can provide a little historical context, in the last round of negotiations, the deputy chief was actually within the union contract. The union contract slated that that wage was 9% above whatever the lieutenants make, and that language was pulled out and put into the administrative rules and regulations. So the deputy police chief's wage is dictated by the command police union contract, which is tied to the patrol contract. And so essentially, that pay compression, which was one of the issues that we had mentioned to Jeff when this project essentially started, was one of our concerns, and how we can kind of adjust that. The difficult part is that it's tied to whenever the union gets an increase, that position gets an increase, because it historically has been connected and is currently in the admin rules and regs at the 9% above. So we did, in the adjustment or the proposal that we listed, was essentially listing it at a higher step grade and allowing there to still be fluctuation after that, but it will be something that has to continue to be reviewed to ensure that that pay compression is addressed.
And maybe at some point, you can get it changed in terms of your administrative rules and get it de-linked from, and obviously, you need to think about, so whether you pay patrol officers, sergeant, lieutenants relative to the command structure, if you will, but are the chief, so that there's an appropriate differential, but I think it's, we look carefully at the position, and the market says, and you can see that, what other communities pay their deputy versus their chief, and it's around 10%, give or take, it depends on the community. And that's where we thought you should be, and that's where we landed with the police chief being a 10 and deputy being a 9. That's a 10% differential. But that's the position, and again, we're dealing now with what about the person, right? The actual individual.
And some of these issues essentially become resolved through attrition, and as people transition out, and so as language changes, that'll be impacted. And so the same thing for like the step increases, when you hire somebody, you know, say, Randy, I think you got five-year commitment, when Randy retires, you're not gonna hire somebody with 25 years of experience and be committed to whatever Randy's making, you would place them at the appropriate grade. And so I think even through attrition, once the deputy chief that is currently in place that essentially was hired directly after that agreement of pulling them out of the union, that's a time when there can be conversation where that 9% is amended at that point, and then the council's no longer tied to whatever was formerly in the union contract.
I guess, like I said, my concern would be, you know, no offense to you, Corey, but if, say, our police chief were to leave tomorrow, and we need to hire somebody, I mean, you know, coming in and looking at this, you know.
Yeah, it's a challenge. You know that the pay range for the new police chief that we're proposing is competitive with the market. The problem is this internal matter, and I don't, and maybe you're gonna have to do a little bit more for the police chief because you've got this situation, but hopefully over time, that would get corrected. And I think you need to get that job sort of tied to the market, not tied to the contract as it is now, or apparently is now, right? It's got some relationship X percent more than the lieutenant, okay? That's right. It's an art, not a science, right? It's challenge, lots of challenges.
Other questions? So, the proposal in front of us is both, or at least we have the report from the study, the proposal from administration is to adopt both the grade and steps that are proposed?
Yes, and then to place the current positions, the current incumbents, into the steps that were proposed, so that we essentially can get on schedule with what you guys adopt. And then administration essentially has a year and a half to get everyone in compliance. So it's essentially transitioning from the COLA increase, you know, through budget or after budget through a budget amendment, and transitioning to performance review related for any increases or step increases.
Okay, does that put them in different grades, then? Well, that would put them in different grades currently. So does that have to go through? Because we don't actually, I I thought civil service moved employees between grades. We just set, we set the grades, but then they move them up and down.
So on the current schedule, yes, they can move them up and down, but they won't approve it unless you guys are approving budget on the back end. So moving, say, the chief into grade 10, if I don't have budget to do that, then they're not going to approve that change. Because if I place him in a grade that is higher than what I'm currently paying him, then they're committing the finances of paying him, because I can't pay him lower and I can't pay him higher than the grade.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess, I think similar to maybe what you're getting at, I thought we, what at least I'm comfortable with today, because, you know, we've only had the one weekend also to think about it, and I know at my work, I think they've been talking about a wage study for like two years now, I think. Certainly not suggesting we take that long. But the we should, I was comfortable accepting the grades and steps, but not necessarily moving any employees, because I think that's the executive's role. I don't think we'd have enough information to know if that's appropriate or not. And also, I guess, we'd have to have a budget discussion, because that, well, that'll be, you know, $100,000 extra per year for those changes, I guess, was my initial thoughts.
Would that be, I guess, your thoughts, would that include the 12 grades?
Yeah, I think the 12 grades and the 12 steps is good, the proposed appendix F, appendix F. Is that at least what I'm looking at right now? I don't know if there were, like, multiple different specific pages we needed to approve, or if it was just.
So is there, is there, excuse me, from an administration's perspective, is there really a need to include 11 and 12 at this point?
That'd be up to council. I know, I think 11 is vacant, and then 12 is essentially the structure for you guys in moving forward to a point. So it's, I wouldn't see anyone being moved into 11 or 12.
Well, I guess if you're suggesting if we get rid of, let's see, I guess I'm not sure off the top of my head here if 11 or 12 is more appropriate for our current city manager contract, but just keep one of those two, then? And it's probably not a bad idea to have that range, I guess, like the gentleman said.
Well, and we had recommended that if you wanted to put the city manager in the system, and some communities do that and some don't, we're advocates of put them all in, treat them all the same. So if you were going to do it, the market would say the job should be in 12. And 11 is just vacant, and you may or may not someday use that for another position, what have you, but
Oh, just so it's not such a huge jump.
Yeah, we keep our 10% difference from one level to the next.
Okay.
We like to be tidy about that. I think it just, consistency's a good thing for you, trust me. So if you don't use it, don't use it, but at least it's there and you marched up 10% along the way, and maybe someday you'll use it, or you might not. I don't know if we have any other, do we have any other vacant grades?
My job's got like 22 grades, so.
I don't think so. Yeah, just 11, just 11 is vacant, it looks like, as I remember. But that's not a bad thing to have a vacant grade. You might, you might use it in the future. Anyway, I think the question has to do, maybe with, if I can jump in, do you want the city manager position to be in this non-union pay system, pay structure? And if you do, then the data would say put it in 12.
That's kind of what I was getting at. I don't know if, I guess, putting, I don't know if putting that position into the into the grade system would sort of tie our hands during contract negotiations in any way. I guess I wouldn't see the purpose of us doing that.
I think, I guess my initial thought is a more structured discussion on wages for a potential city manager. I looked at a, well, I attended even a recent council meeting of a city trying to hire a city manager, and they had a range on their website, and I kind of was wondering how they came up with that range. They probably have this exact thing, which I didn't put two and two together at the time. But then at least, I think anyone who is looking for a position like that might have an idea of what we might hire, be comfortable with hiring, as opposed to maybe someone tries to throw some super high number out, or a super low is probably not good either if we want to keep the the city manager candidate. So I don't think, unless Rich disagrees, I don't think it ties our hands necessarily. If we did want to go outside of that, but I think it's at least a starter, yeah, guide to that discussion.
Okay, I mean, I look at grade 12, and I think that's a, when we go out to our posting, actually looks like a reasonable range.
Yeah, if you looked on page 13, it's all the city manager data we have from a pretty good sample of communities. And overall, the average, if you will, of the of all that median, the median, rather, of all that data is right where the grade 12 midpoint is. Remember, putting our midpoints at the middle of the market, so 153, 154,000, whatever, that, that's what those, and they're pretty consistent. I mean, they vary some, but anyway, but it it's whether you wanted the job in the system or not, I think. And you can always change it, you know, if you want to, and you're negotiating with the new city manager, whatever, trying to, but you've you've got some good data that that you just collected, paid for to get it, get it put together for you. So I'd encourage you to, whether it's in the structure or not, you ought to use that information, that'd be helpful to you.
But we can create a separate structure with, like, the civil service employees, if that's kind of what you're leaning towards, because the court employees also aren't in our civil service. And so essentially, the study could be like the documentation that you guys have of the ranges, and then we can create a separate civil service employee structure that shows the civil service employees and where they're at, which would take the city manager and court positions out. But then when you guys are making budget decisions as it pertains to court position, city manager, what have you, you at least have the data in the in the schedule presented.
Okay. All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make one motion, let's see. I think, well, I'll just make, I'll make a motion that we I don't want to read silence. I'll motion that we adopt the proposed salary structure and step scale developed by Romburg, Stover and Associates, and that is where I will end my motion.
I'll second. Any questions? Please call her on.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, and then I guess I'll have some separate questions. Will administration come back to us possibly on the placing employees, or will that go to civil service?
Or, I mean, council would have to make a decision budget-wise before I can ask civil service. And I mean, some of the grades essentially that you guys have adopted would be different for the position essentially. So we have to know kind of what the direction is of the council, of what you'd like to do or how you would like to have employees placed into the step schedule.
All right. Anything else for right now on that? All right, we'll move on to
Mayor. If you don't mind, pardon my interruption, but do you mind a brief recess?
Oh.
For maybe five minutes or so.
Sure. We'll recess 8:58 for five minutes.
Okay, six minutes.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order at 9:04. Moving on to a discussion on city manager qualifications in the city charter, Mr. Councilman DeMonico, did you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will keep this brief, is actually, I guess, the suggested change, at least. Suggested change is somewhat brief here. We've got in the city charter are some qualifications for the city manager position, and to change any of the charter requirements, we need a vote of the people. I know everybody at the council table knows that, but just for the audience, and we would have to put something on the ballot, so there's, of course, a few steps to do that. And essentially, I just thought the current charter language, which is shown in the documents in the agenda packet here, just greatly restricts the potential candidate pool. And I thought if we change the charter language a little bit, that we could expand it. And then, of course, as you see, just like many other city charters, we use male pronouns throughout the city manager section, too. And of course, that is not something we should be doing. But yes, so essentially, I think that we could change the beginning of the second sentence to say instead, the manager shall have had at least two years' experience in municipal management. Right now, it says manager, assistant manager experience in a city or village. And at that time, when we pass the charter, after Mr. Albright pointed out, I believe basically cities and villages were the only kind of things that had any sort of management like we do these days. There were no chartered townships yet or chartered counties. So I think if we just made that more vague, like from our previous searches, we couldn't consider like a township supervisor, or even like a county executive, say they, you know, applied, which seemed just silly to me, I guess. But that is what I propose. You can put 100 words on the ballot, and I proposed some language there, too. But that that was really the purpose of this. I think we'd have to put it on the ballot in November. So might not apply for this search, but I just think to make it easier for future councils. That would be a good idea.
Councilman DeMonico, do you have any concern with, and I know Councilman DeMonico, do you have any concern with, and I know, I know we have talked about this, I think, before, like, a couple of years ago, but just thinking about the position because some of, like, with, in respect to the municipalities, some places appoint the manager, like basically we hire this person that we want versus, and I may say the wrong kind of municipality, but like a village or a township that is elected where somebody's on the ballot.
Sure.
And even though roles may be, I don't know how similar, but the accountability is different.
Mm-hmm.
So would you have concern with that? Because if somebody's elected, so say, for instance, I apply for a job somewhere as a manager, I'm elected by the people.
Yep.
I basically come in and say, okay, this is how I'm gonna do it. So my experience is different, and the way I function is different versus a council appointing me or hiring me. And then now there's that accountability, you know, with the council, with that council manager form of government. And so I just think we run into two different experiences if we aren't careful.
Sure. Yeah, I certainly understand your concern there. We would have to consider that for sure. There can be, of course, township supervisors that are part-time and some are full-time. But right now, if we do, for example, a chartered township supervisor is elected, but they also run the day-to-day, so that is their full-time job. That's what they spend their waking hours on. They currently wouldn't be able to apply. So like, you know, the township supervisor of Clinton Township or Shelby Township or anything like that, they wouldn't be able to apply. Or the county executive, say, Mark Hackel applied. We wouldn't be able to hire him, although he's run a county for, you know, however many, fifteen years or whatever, and that's his full-time job. So this would just open it up so that we could at least consider those people. Of course, there could be other, you know, we'd have to look at it and say, if someone did apply and it's some small township of five hundred people and their office is their house or something, basically, I'm pretty sure there's some out there in the state that's not, you know, similar to, of course, the other positions I just mentioned.
Yeah. And I think some of my concern, I'm trying to say this the right way, but like, say, for instance, me, I don't have the management experience, but say we have some affiliation sitting up here on council with the manager roles to some degree. And then I go to a neighboring city and say, apply for the job, you know, that can be potentially detrimental. Say I have a lot of friends that work in that city and they say, hey, we'll hire you. It's not really the best practice. So I guess that's kind of really where I'm cautioned.
Okay, if like a city?
Yeah.
Another city council person or something applied, I guess it, okay. Yeah, I would say that's not municipal management experience in the classic term of management. It's a policymaking. I guess I would personally say, I think in terms, though, of, I think it's just better that it's more vague so that we could make that determination, because right now it just cuts people out regardless of if they are qualified or not. This would kind of flip it. Of course, the public is here to give their opinion, and I would hope, I don't think, you know, our city council is going to hire like someone, as you are saying, we'll find a pool of professional managers and then hire out of that pool.
Yeah. And I guess I would, uh, I would like to say, yes, I believe that would happen. And then this is not directed at anybody, you know, sitting here, but I think, one, requiring, uh, whatever, what is it, the year or two of experience is definitely not asking too much. But also, it lets the residents know with a certainty too that we're not, you know, I'm not telling my friend, I'm using me as, I'm not telling my friend Joey over there to come apply for the manager job and that you'll get it. And so that's really where my caution comes in, because, I mean, there's no guarantee of who all will sit up here on council. And so it's just not only thinking about today, and like you said, it's not, probably not gonna happen for this selection, but it's also thinking about tomorrow, you know, when we're, when whatever council is serving has to make those decisions. And so it's just trying to keep a protection in place for whoever's sitting up here deciding on who to hire and to avoid those appearances of, you know,
Sure.
My buddy Joey getting a job.
I think maybe one more thought I wasn't thinking of a second ago was in a lot of communities, I think that the directors of the various departments are sometimes candidates or as our very nearby cities have hired department heads as the city manager. So that would not be possible also with the current language. And I think that especially greatly limits us from hiring within. As we have it now, there's literally only one person in the entire city that would be able to take over the job unless a department or head or something was like an assistant manager, city manager, previous to having become a department head in our community. But say that scenario doesn't exist, there's probably only one person in the entire city that could become city manager, while I think, you know, maybe our finance director here, he's been here a very long time and is at every single council meeting. In general, I'd say someone like that, you know, probably could be a good candidate for city manager. And if we leave the current language as is, we could never consider someone like that. And I know Randy's thinking about putting his name in right now. No, I know, I'm kidding. That's why I used your name. So that was also some of my thinking for proposing the change.
Well, I think for me, personally, I would, uh, before I would say, I think I need a little more time to ball it over. Because I do understand some of, like, how you're looking at it. You know, and as much as I know Randy wants to put his name in the hat, you know, hands are tied, but I just kind of want to kick it around a little bit more. But I mean, that's ultimately up to the rest of council, how you guys feel. But I just kind of got a couple of things I kind of want to think over. I mean, I read over it, but, you know, I know it's a little interesting topic there.
Well, this is, for me, this has come up multiple times over the years as our city has done multiple searches for city managers. I think it's a, it's a good change. I think, really, it probably won't make a difference for us selecting a city manager, but in the future, down the line, I think it makes it easier for the council to find candidates if they have to. It's been an issue in Michigan. It's an issue all across Michigan that there's a shortage of city managers. And I've talked to some other cities, too. They, when they have provisions, provisions like this one, it just ties your hand, hands when there's already a limited pool. So I would be in favor of the change. I think, I think it makes sense. We're competing with other communities all across the state. I don't think we need to have one hand tied behind our backs, so. Any other comments?
No, but I, well, I think it's a good idea, and I'm ready to make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I think for, for the way the agenda item is structured tonight, I think the appropriate way would be to make a motion to instruct the city attorney to prepare a resolution to that effect. Then the council would need to vote on the resolution. That resolution then would be afforded to the governor's office for review and recommendation. In years past, in speaking with Mr. Ellsworth, he usually likes to have that his office for review, because they do a very, very thorough review with his team. And they usually like to have that, you know, you know, a couple of weeks into May at the latest. So there is still some time to get that done. But again, that would be the procedure. Instruct me to prepare that resolution, and it would come before the council for a vote.
Okay, then, Mayor, I would, I would move to instruct our city attorney to write up a resolution to present to the council.
For a charter amendment.
For a charter amendment.
I'll second it.
Your pick. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
All right. Next approval, approve the and award the contract for the Memorial Library interior renovations. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I will motion we award the contract for East Point Memorial Library interior renovations to OEX Office Express, twelve eighty East Big Beaver Road, Troy, Michigan, four eight oh eight three, in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars without further approval by council and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the next item, approve resolution number twenty-five dash one nine nine eight, declaring the necessity for, for and directing the construction, repair, reconstruction of certain sidewalks and driveway approaches. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, next item, approve the rezoning for property one seven zero two zero, east ten mile from MU one, neighborhood mixed use to LI light industrial.
So moved.
To the recommended motion based on the findings of fact within the planner's review letter dated December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Amended as such.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt?
Yes.
All right, next item, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash one two four six, amend chapter eighteen, article six, road and control. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
You don't want to say that again? I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, do you want to state it since?
No, what, what, what number, what number are we on?
Oh, it's labeled F?
Oh, for the road and control.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You have a motion for the second reading?
Second, Councilman Baker, right, or say?
Yep. All right. Did anyone have any comments on this one?
Yes, I have a few. First of all, who's going to answer my questions? It's mostly procedural, but I, I, I want to know who they, so who, would the city manager, city attorney?
What, what questions do you have?
Well, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, let me take my glasses off. First question is, how would you, what procedure are you going to use to contact all the citizens about this new document?
So we've utilized constant contact. We've put it on the cable channel. And I know there are flyers that have been provided. We've had conversations with our team about potentially putting something in the water bill, like an educational, like an informational section that would essentially just be an additional print attached to water bills.
Okay. So once somebody makes up the flyer about you got to do this for the road and control, and you got to do this about cutting your hedges and all, how much time do you think you would give the citizens to correct a situation?
Well, given that it's winter time, we would be hopeful that things would be in compliance once the springtime hits. So essentially, when they start going out to code and force for lawns, which is typically like end of April, depending on how warm it gets, beginning end of May.
So the end of May, so, okay, all right. I, I've read the thing. I'm still a little concerned. No, I'm not a little concerned. I'm a lot, a lot concerned about, not the road and control, but trimming the hedges. The hedges are, has to be twelve inches from the ground. There should be a twelve inch opening, correct, so far?
Uh, not the hedges.
No, we amended that. Page three? Yeah. So we amended that, now it reads, keep all trees and other appropriate greenery reasonably trimmed to allow at least twelve inches of open area beneath, and continually remove, same from fencing walls and other structures.
So someone doesn't, would not have to go out there and trim it up to twelve inches? Is that correct?
Yeah, not a bush like you're talking about.
What's that, what's that?
Not a bush like you're talking.
Okay, hedges.
Yeah, not a hedge.
Nothing.
Well, just if your tree was all the way, all the, you know, leaves all the way to the ground, you know, like, when you're walking down the sidewalk, you know, it shouldn't be that, that kind of thing. Or in your yard, twelve inches from the ground, I think is what we're saying. And that's why we change it to appropriate greenery, because then we don't have to list every single possible thing that should apply, and then it wouldn't apply to the scenario like you're saying.
The reason I'm asking all these questions, because I'm, I'm concerned about our citizen, senior citizens. When it was originally written about having your hedges and up twelve inches off the ground, I can imagine somebody like, a person maybe eighty-eight years old going out there and try to trim the things up. They, they couldn't do it. But that's non-avoidant. We don't have to do that anymore.
No, and I don't think we, I don't think this requires that.
Okay. The other one I have question, and let's talk about it, is the, the second penalty. I'm looking for my paperwork. Oh, here it is. The second penalty would be what? Five hundred dollars or ninety days in jail? Correct? My question is, who in the city would make the decision that I don't want the five hundred dollars, I want to put that person in jail? Who, madam, our city attorney? Would you make the decision to put somebody in jail?
It would be the judge at sentencing. The judge would make that determination.
So the judge has, has a, he can either fine five hundred dollars or ninety days in jail?
The judge had, would have that discretion as part of her sentencing powers.
And you would represent the city saying that this guy or this woman has been really terrible and you're recommending to send them to jail?
A, as the prosecutor, I would be the one bringing the charge, prosecuting the person, perhaps all the way through a trial, and then the matter would be set for sentencing. And depending on the circumstances, sometimes I make a recommendation to the court as to what the sentence, as we believe the sentence should be. The defense also has an opportunity to address the court as to sentencing, and ultimately that decision rests with the judge who makes the sentence and imposes it.
Under what circumstances, and I don't want to put you on a,
Okay, feel free.
You don't have to answer, but what, under what circumstances would you think that this man or this woman needs to go to jail because of rodents?
I would say it would have to be a very egregious set of facts for that to happen.
And this would happen on the second citation, not the first?
The first would just be a civil infraction.
Right.
And just subject to a fine, second or subsequent convictions would be then, would be classified as misdemeanors.
Hmm, okay.
Do you want to make an amend, propose an amendment?
Am I?
Do you want to?
What are you suggesting?
I'm just asking, because I think I'd second your proposal, if you were going to propose to break the ninety days.
You know, the, rodeness in your yard is terrible, but also... You know, the, rodents in your yard is terrible, but also there are such easy ways to alleviate the problem without having to send someone to jail. Pick up the damn feces from the animals, don't let lumber laid directly on the ground, they can, you can do that. And we need more, we need more neighbors to turn their neighbor in. I have three neighbors and one of them has a problem, and I, I called and said, hey. And someone came out, the guy said, I didn't know it. Maybe he didn't. And he, um...
Councilman Curly, the council could, for us, a second offense, also classify that as a civil infraction, but graduate fine, so it would be, for instance, not to exceed $500 on a second conviction. And then a third offense within a 12-year period or 12-month period would be misdemeanor.
And it could be higher than five, could be more than 500, or it could be the 500.
500 or...
Because right now, the second one is 590 days in jail. Well, I'm, um, okay, I'm going to make a motion. May not pass.
Well, do you, you had motions.
We have Rob, Rob and Cardi as the makers of the motion.
Okay, so you want to amend the language?
I want, yeah, I want to amend the, I want to delete the second offense, or even the third offense, no more, no more jail sentences.
Okay.
What? Oh, you do have the motion, oh, you do, don't you? I would, I would...
You can make a motion to amend, and then we'll, we'll call it that first, that's why it was clarified.
Okay, I would, I would like to amend the main motion. Is that what I do? Help me out, city attorney.
Yes, motion to amend the main motion.
A motion to amend the main motion? So I need a second, and then you vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
So what's?
What's the amendment?
What's the, the motion, the amendment?
No, do I, I don't know, you got to help me out for the wording, I mean, you guys are so technical on your wording, help me out.
Based on your statements, I believe you want to decriminalize this and not make any convictions, misdemeanors, you want to just have it as civil infractions.
That's right.
And maybe just have it as a graduated fine.
A graduated fine system. That's, that's exactly what I want to do. Thank you.
So, given this is...
The second, yeah.
Yeah, second reading, it should probably be specific language, right?
You got to give a motion.
Well, I guess, Councilman Curly, if you're, you're okay with it, just striking the sentence that starts with second and just replacing with second or subsequent offense within a 12-month period shall be, shall constitute a civil infraction punishable, punishable by a fine up to $500.
That would be appropriate.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second. All right. Please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
All right, now, motion for the second reading. Do you have a question? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the next item, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 25-1247, amend chapter 10, article 11, adult-use marijuana establishments.
I would move that we introduce and give first reading to ordinance number 25-1247 to amend chapter 10, creating article 11 adult-use recreational marijuana establishments, and schedule a second reading and adoption for the regular city council meeting on March 4th with the amendment on page three, paragraph, section 10, 277, paragraph D, proper, D word properly, as well as to add that the establishments can stay open to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Wednesday and 11:00 p.m. Thursday through Sunday.
All right, is there support?
I'll sup, yeah, I'll support, but I got, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I did, I got a phone call, and, and this is what the phone call is, we have three, allow me to not be so technical, we have three people out there that have a medical marijuana, but we also gave each one of them recreational marijuana, correct the license. So we have three out there that already have it, and they were, they're a thousand feet from a church, a thousand feet from a school, and a thousand feet from any city park. Correct so far?
500 for the park.
For the park. All right, help me out on this one. You have, you have, we have two on Gresham right now, and I think they're both, I think they're both on the west side, and then we have one on the corner of Eight Mile and Kelly, correct? Now, was, is there something in the ordinance that these entities had to be a thousand feet apart?
Mayor, can I address that?
Yes, please.
So what, the way the, the ordinance sits before the council tonight is, is proposed is that those buffer requirements are part of the zoning ordinance, and so medical marijuana facilities are subject to the current zoning ordinance, which talks about the buffer districts and separation standards. So what this proposed ordinance does is it reverts back to and adopts the same provisions that are applicable to medical marijuana facilities would be applicable to adult-use facilities. And right now, just for the public, those would be, buffer district is defined as the area within 500 feet of the following, and that's any private or public preschool, elementary, secondary, vocational, or trade school, college, or university, any public park, existing licensed childcare centers, and any existing place of worship or religious assembly. A licensee cannot operate a medical marijuana facility within the buffer districts, and medical marijuana provisioning centers cannot be closer than 1,000 feet from any other medical marijuana provisioning center measured from property line to property line. So those are the current, those are the...
So that last part is what I'm curious about. So, we'll go through the process, we've got one, one license, right? That's, you go through the process, however that...
And that would be actually a separate, a separate ordinance change, because this is, those buffering districts are part of the zoning ordinance.
What I, what I want to ask you is that if this person, whoever that person is that gets the license, my question is, could they not have an established building that is closer than a thousand feet from any one of the other three?
Well, as the, if, say, this ordinance passes at a second reading, that fourth license is subject to the current buffering restrictions, unless that there's a zoning ordinance change.
And how do we do that?
That would have to start, it would originate with the planning commission and with a recommendation to the city council.
Because, and this is why I'm asking all this, you know, they, the three were very careful, and it took a long time for them to figure out where they're going to go, and this fourth one is kind of being squeezed, because where are they going to go? If they, if, if we don't change that, they might not be able to find a building that's more than a thousand feet from one of the other three. Whereas if you change the ordinance and if planning commi, it does, would have to go through the planning commission.
Because it's a change to the zoning ordinance, it would be a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, but you understand what I'm saying, that where are they going to find someplace if, if it's less than a thousand? Say, say they found a perfect place 800 feet from one of the establishments on Gresham, the way it's set up right now, they couldn't do it.
Well, the, the city council ultimately sets those buffer requirements.
I know, but right now, right now, if a guy bought, if, if I got that license and I found a building and it's 833 feet from the one at Eight Mile and Kelly, I couldn't open it, is that correct? Without, without going anything else, right now, the way thing is written, I could not do it.
That's correct.
Thank you for that, geez. All right. So, how do we, what kind of motion can I make tonight to forward it to the planning commission?
The maker of the motion could approve what's presented with any amendments, but again, it's not going to change the text of what's before, but you could include in your motion to also, for the planning commission, to look at the buffer requirements and make a recommendation back to the council if, if those should even be changed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Come on, please.
I have a question for the city attorney, because of the fact that this conversion is to be competitive, this addition was to be competitive, and so instead of changing the criteria, we were held to the original criteria and scoring requirements for this fourth. So if the criteria is now changed and it's less than a thousand feet, are we not subject to suit from the previous applicants who may have been, you know, denied based on the thousand-foot requirement? We're opening that door, where all of a sudden the criteria being considered is no longer the same competition, quote-unquote.
That's a possibility, yes. Whether that in fact would happen, uh, would remain to be seen, but I guess that is a possibility.
You look at me like you rang your at me. You did, you gave me a kind of that look, so I'm sorry. Well, um, well, we got some time to do it, let me, let me go home and have a glass of Kil curly wine, and I'll, I'll come back in two weeks and make an amendment.
I do have a question myself. Granted, you guys know what my position is on it, but part of the requirement when the medical licenses were awarded was demo reconstruction, so is that still a requirement, even though you guys are doing a conversion ordinance to allow adult use, recreational use? And then also, should there be a, I may not state this the right way, but because they're now switching the use from medical to recreational, should that also be, should they also be required to voluntarily, I don't know if you would say rescind or terminate the medical licenses, and then the medical ordinance could actually be done away with because you're not doing medical, use medical marijuana, you're going to recreational, so.
So, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, as, as long as there are medical marijuana licenses, we do have that ordinance, but the city council could take the position that it's not going to grant any additional medical marijuana licenses with the intent to eventually phase them out. So that actually would be a separate ordinance, because right now, three are allowed for medical marijuana. I know that the three attorneys that were present and spoke during audience participation also made mention of the fact, they had a question, under the conversion ordinance, they are going to be entitled to automatically qualify for adult-use license. The question then becomes, do they have to then consistently and consecutively maintain that medical marijuana license for all the ensuing years that they also have or keep or apply for or renew an adult-use license? For instance, say, three years from now, they decide for business reasons, economic reasons, that they no longer want to maintain medical marijuana, and therefore they're not going to renew that license, does that then disqualify them from, under the conversion ordinance, from also maintaining their adult-use license? So, I guess I'm looking for clarification from the council, would they then be able to allow basically their medical, they, in order to apply for the method, the adult-use license, they have to have a valid medical marijuana license, but would they be permitted to let that lapse in the future and then hold on to their adult-use license?
Mayor, didn't, at one council meeting a couple of months ago, weren't we informed that you thought that the medical marijuana was going to be phased out from the state?
Well, that's what we've been told. I don't think that's happened yet, but that's what we've been told, there is people that believe, it's basically an opinion at this point, it's nothing concrete yet.
So, in response to what you just said, I think during our discussions, the intent was, I believe, to phase out the medical, when they are, when they do lapse, not to hand out anymore. We just have this in front of us tonight, but I think if we need to, or I think we need to pass a separate ordinance stating that and phasing those out. I don't think the intent was for people to continue to hold two licenses, I don't think it makes a lot of sense. So that's my position on those two questions that you just asked. Does anyone in council disagree with that? Okay. The second thing that I wanted to speak to was, I actually would like to make an amendment to Councilwoman Shadlick's motion for the same section. I would like to, well, I guess I'll just make a motion. I move to amend the language at the end of section D to read, "When properly renewed, will be designated as a provisioning center slash retailer permit, but only if the facility, but only if the permit holder of the facility is open and operating by December 31, 2025." Did, did you hit that rich?
I did. I can always go back at the video and watch it.
Would anyone support that amendment?
I'll support that.
And just to explain, so we had these discussions previously, I've spoken to some of the people that were holding the medical marijuana licenses. It's been quite some time where we have not had facilities open, I think there should be some sort of timeline that if we're essentially going to convert the license, I'm okay with that, but it shouldn't be indefinite, I think those license holders need to either open up or, you know, the recreational licenses should be up for grabs, so.
And based on the discussion tonight, and knowing now what the members feel, I'll also add some lapse language in that subsection D as well.
I do have one question, because I had asked earlier about the demo reconstruction that was part of the requirement, so are you guys still looking to have them do that or not?
It's a G, that it requires a freestanding building right now on page four. So at least right now, it's written.
Mayor?
Yep.
As someone who was on the scoring committee, the top three that got the licenses, and I may not have had the exact 1, 2, 3 order that they came in, but they were my top three because they were doing demo reconstruct, and because of their community, whatever it was deemed, but, you know, what they were giving back to the community, there's nothing in this ordinance that requires them to do what they promised when they got the medical license. And the scoring would have been different if you took the community benefit out, I guarantee you there was one on Ten Mile that I would have had my top three, except for the community benefit piece. So somehow they have to be held to what they promised within the ordinance, if you're going to just convert, otherwise they can say, well, I'm going to throw some paint on the building and I'm open, and that doesn't do anything for the city. And that does not then fit the competition that's supposed to be there.
Well, I, I don't know if I agree with the concern about the competition, but I, I don't want to go down that road, because that's really a legal question that I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. I, I think that the issue that we're running into there is a little bit separate, because I think that's, I think the issue there is that when we did the medical process... I think that's, I think the issue there is that when we did the medical, uh, process, at that time, we didn't put teeth in to make sure that these kind of like benefits or whatever that might have led into scoring, um, that they could only hold that license if they completed that process. I don't think at this point, going back and trying to add those, I guess, teeth for that makes sense. I think that gets a little, I, I agree with you that
Yeah.
they should do it, but I, I, I think it might be too messy to try to use this ordinance to go back and revisit how we issued or how we handled those.
I thought it was part of keeping the required special land use, which essentially you have to have to have the medical marijuana license.
I think the, some of the construction, I don't know about the community benefit.
Right, I mean, one of them was, oh, we're gonna give you money to put in a basketball court, that has nothing to do with planning. Uh, you can't hold them to it. The one who's gonna put in the dog park and that would be part of their planning.
But I thought that was, maybe I'm thinking generally, I don't know if all three of them were motion the same way, but I thought that's what I recalled from when I was liaison on planning was that that was part of then the special land use. Um, I mean, again, I don't have those right in front of me.
Okay.
But, uh, I thought we did have something. But again, right now, I think, right, now speaking of special land use, right, nobody is even to that, well, site plans are going to expire if people don't continue, right? Actually, one, if we can, can we back up one second though? I had a procedural question about your amendment because we had the motion. Do we need to just do a quick vote on your?
We should, sorry, that's on me. I should have limited the discussion then to the.
Sorry.
So you, you're correct. Please call the roll.
Uh, Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Um, and then I guess what we're talking about kind of gets into a question I had about, is there a difference between having, let me look at my note, having a permit and a license? I know, seems kind of like a strange question, but if you're supposed to have the $5,000 renewal fee every year, I guess, right? And we're talking about this conversion and the conversion is on, I guess, the existing permit, right? Is the renewal fee required? Have they, I, I guess maybe that has been being paid, I have no idea, or is just the initial payment been paid, I guess, uh, from city admin?
Yeah, that might be a question for, I don't know.
I don't know right offhand, I'd have to. Um, they've only paid the initial application fee. There's been no renewal applications filed or anything.
And when did we give these permits or licenses, whichever is the appropriate term, I guess, when were these handed out?
The permit versus license was an issue in the first ordinance that was difficult to deal with. Um, and I, I would have to check the dates. I, I believe one of them may be coming up on a deadline very soon.
But I think we initially chose the three permits in, I believe, January 2023, I believe.
Um, one was, and then two came behind, if I remember correctly, in terms of going to planning and then going to council.
And I guess I'm just asking because if, um, how do we convert if, um, they don't have a permit? Because right now they couldn't, they can't sell right now, right? Because there's no open building or anything like that. So they don't have a license, I would say, but I guess if the language is permit?
They have an approved application and then they have to go through all the other steps.
So then, yeah, if we say as of the effective date of this ordinance, an exist, existing permit to operate a provisioning center, does that actually include those three businesses? Seems like no, according to what.
Uh, yeah, it, maybe that's something Mr. Albright can take a look at and clarify. I mean, I think the intent is clear, but if the issue of license versus permit is a problem, I didn't realize it was a problem previously, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get with city administration.
Any other questions?
Uh, no. Uh, Ms. Mayor, before we go any further, uh, the jerk would like to make an apology to Kim. Uh, Kim, I'm sorry, um, at that, I'm not gonna make, it was unacceptable and should not have happened and I apologize through my, deep in my heart that I would say that something to you like that. So I, accept my apology, please. Thank you. Okay, where are we at? Are we on?
I think we're ready to call.
Is there a main, a, a main motion on the floor to?
There is.
Just one very, very quick comment. I'm, I'm gonna be voting no again because I think it, you know, we should be doing the four instead of the three plus one for the licenses. Just, uh, just wanted to be clear since there's a lot of different discussions going on.
All right. Please call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
All right, um, oh, article, well, next, introduction, first reading ordinance number 25, 1248, repeal chapter 12, article, uh, 12 prohibition of recreational marijuana business in establishments. Could somebody make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second Councilmember Pachadlick's motion.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Uh, yes. Uh, moving on to item, I believe now we're at the, uh, approval of special event application. 26 annual cruising Grashit, uh, June 11th through 14th, 2025. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Uh, Mayor, I'll motion, we, I guess I'll read this as quickly as possible. Approve the special event application for East Point Grashit Cruise on June 11th through 14th, 2025. Contingent upon the following requirements, all food trucks at the event must be permitted after an approved inspection, at least five business days before the event. Any tents larger than 10 by 10 foot must be permitted at least one week before the event. Event coordinators will cooperate with the police department needs and will pay necessary costs. Event coordinators will pay the necessary cost for Department of Public Works Services, currently estimated at $6,800. All vendors must be licensed before the event. The, and the, uh, board of directors and steering committee of East Point Grashit Cruise Incorporated must establish the same insurance requirements for general and liquor liability that were in place in prior year events, naming the city of East Point as an additional insurer.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yeah.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to approval of appointments to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. So I guess, uh, I guess I'll just go through and list these off. I'm going to be requesting a motion to confirm, uh, the following appointments, reappointment of Pamela Russell with the term to expire October 15th, 2027. Repartement of Joylyn Williams with a term to expire October 15th, 2027. Repartement of Renita Phillips, term to expire October 15th, 2026. Repartement of Juwanda Buckles, uh, Nadei, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, term to expire October 15th, 2027. Approval of, uh, appointment of Stephanie Swirkaus with a term to expire October 15th, 2025, and appointment of Kai Hayes with a, uh, term to expire October 15th, 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to appointments to the, uh, Local Officers Compensation Commission, I am requesting, uh, a motion to affirm the appointment of, appointments of Christine Landino for a term to expire April 7th, 2031, and, uh, appointment of Craig Ruposaski with a term to expire April 7th, 2030.
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, um, assessment part of the review, is that, uh, do we know if that's mayoral or?
It's council appointment.
Okay, that is my question. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll motion to appoint, uh, Stephanie Swirkaus to the Board of Review with term to expire March 15th, 2027, and Keith Spiller with term to expire March 15th, 2028, and Walter Martin, uh, to expire March 15th, 2028.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. And seeking a motion to, uh, confirm the appointment of Daniel Palmaville to the Beautification Commission with a term to expire October 15th, 2027.
I was so, so moved.
Outside.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
All right, and approval of Councilmember DeMonico's attendance for 2025 MML Capitol Conference. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the, um, added item, which was discussion on the Parks Commission. Uh, Councilmember Baker?
Yes, very, very brief discussion, but, uh, I talked with Chairman Sasek and, uh, he would like to, um, reduce the number of, uh, seats on that board, I mean, on the commission. Instead of seven, uh, he would like to go down to five. Reason being is just because of the vacancies and, uh, it's been a little difficult to make quorum, so reducing the board down to five members would make it easier, uh, for them to meet quorum. And I told him I would break it before council, but I did agree with that assessment.
Um, I would be fine with that. I, I would note, I've been, uh, asking people, um, you know, who are interested in commissions, trying to get people on the Parks Commission. It's been a struggle getting people, not just on, but that, um, are able to continuously make meetings. And I know that you guys have been, uh, trying your best to coordinate and make sure everyone can be there, so. I would be okay with that change in the event that there's more attendance that we see in the future. I think we can always increase it, but I think it'd be okay for it to be reduced to five.
Do, do we need a motion for that or is it just?
I think it should change it.
Yeah, a motion to direct.
Mr. Albright?
Yeah.
Make the necessary changes in the ordinance?
I'll support. Uh, anyone have any other comments on that?
Just fit, what did you say?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh.
Um, just very brief, I think, uh, and this issue, of course, has popped up with, uh, other commissions. I like the commission like, commissions like parks and beautification and, um, where just like a lot of ideas come together and propose to us. Stay at a higher number. If you don't hit quorum, I think you can still have an informal meeting. You just don't vote on things. Um, I know we've done, we'll, at beautification a time or two, don't meet quorum, and we'll still discuss a couple of things and it's still, uh, like public, we're still at the meeting, just it's not an official meeting then. And I guess I'd rather in general just do that and we just try to fill the spots. Obviously, you know, we have a differing of opinions, but I think that's, um, how I feel on that.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember DeMonico, we, we've kind of run into a crossroads with, uh, parks and it's been an ongoing thing. Um, and we have to, we've had to reschedule quite a few meetings. And so now with the vacancies that we have and the lack of, uh, applicants, it's just hard for them, like even with the, uh, to make recommendations, they can't do it because, uh, they don't have quorum. So it's just literally people, you know, maybe three or four people meeting up. And so at least that's, this way, currently it would allow them to be able to conduct business and to make those recommendations, uh, for the parks and, uh, bring them to council. And then, uh, like, uh, Mayor Kleinfeld said, uh, if more people start applying, we can always increase that number, but I just don't want to tie their hands from being able to move, that, that's all it is, so.
Then unrelated, that specific point, um, can we post, like on the city accounts about applying again? Because I think generally, what I've seen in the past, it's like, you know, a whole bunch at a time, they don't kind of like trickle in. It's like when we remind the public that, um, there's vacancies, uh, usually a few come in. So, um, I guess if we can do that at least again, now here in the near future, maybe we can get a few more for parks or for any of the commissions.
Yeah, they've done a great work, uh, of that.
Oh, no, you're fine, go on.
Yeah, they, they've done a great work, I mean, just with the improvements and, uh, Roxanna Park, Gads Park, you know, and just all the other ideas that they've had and all the research they've done in regards to finding out information about the splash pad and the costs. Uh, I, I know, uh, even with the master plan, they, they put in a lot of work, so that's why I would really like to see them just be able to continue to function.
Uh, and actually, uh, just thought of it since you were mentioning keeping them larger, could we, um, possibly entertain having, instead of just taking it simply from seven to five, have five and then two alternates appointed as well?
Hey, I mean, I'd be fine, I mean, yeah, I think that's fine.
Um, I, I think that just makes sense that we, we can still appoint others, people to be there if we have others interested that can go to the meetings. All right. Uh, I, I guess are you amending your motion in that?
Absolutely.
Still support. Please call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Or was that the second? No, I meant the second.
Oh, Mayor Kleinfeld.
Oh, I'm, my apologies. Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, uh, Aaron Bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
It's a move that we pay the bills in the amount of $3,252,642.75.
All right, are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlick?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, uh, second hearing, the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
I've been sitting too long, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Kleinfeld, Council Gary Sasek, Chairman of the Parks Commission. Thank you so much. Um, this has really been a struggle for us. We've literally had for over a year, two vacancies and for the last five months, the third vacancy. And, um, we've had to cancel meetings. We've literally rescheduled this month's meeting, um, from the, from the fifth, I'm sorry, and we're meeting next week, but it, there's stuff that we have to get done. So I appreciate the concept of five with two alternates because it'll allow, at least allow us to conduct business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Craig Wodecki, probably speaking on behalf of the only commission you haven't heard about tonight. On behalf of the Library Commission, uh, thank you for approving some well-needed, uh, improvements to the library. It's been a long time coming for those back rooms. They could probably film a movie from the sixties based on that room, the way they look with the tile and the paint and, and secondly, I
And secondly, I, I know we're not supposed to single people out, but I want to thank the mayor for your prompt and concise and information about the snow emergency. I know not every Tom, Dick and Harry is on Facebook or social media or whatever's out there, but the fact that you put it out there timely and the reason why you did it or why you didn't do it was appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Um, just a couple of things with the whole marijuana issue. It just kind of rubs me a little bit wrong here. You know, it seems like we have ordinances, we've made decisions about what we want for medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, but yet we are changing. You know, these businesses know when they come here, this is what East Point's rules are, this is what we want, this is what we expect to see from you. If we're going to reconstruct a building, or if they're going to donate something to the city to benefit us, that's, that's how it is, and, and you would think that if that's not acceptable to them, that maybe they would look at another city. Anyways, it is what it is, but again, I just kind of caution with letting the tail wag the dog here because we, we really need to stand up for what we want here, what you've decided. You all have put a lot of work into it, a lot of people have put a lot of work into it. And so you have a business come in and tell you what hours they would like to be open and whether or not they are going to put in a dog park or, you know, it just, it kind of rubs me the wrong way. One other point, not related to that, of course, you know, I have to talk about Nine Mile at least part of the time here. Just following up on something that was mentioned a couple of meetings ago about how SEMCOG is wanting to redo Nine Mile. My understanding, it's kind of from Pinkney all the way to the lake, and I don't really understand it. Our part of Nine Mile is all automotive and drive-throughs and, and really too busy for what they're talking about. Warren, pretty much the same way, I drove from DeQuinder all the way into East Point here. It's more automotive-type businesses, used car lots, industrial. I don't know who's wanting to walk or bike there either. I did look at Warren's website and their Nine Mile Road Plan. Actually, their thoughts for implementing any type of bike lanes would be using Stevens pretty much all the way from DeQuinder to the East Point border, except there's a little area between Mound and Van Dyke where they would be using Nine Mile. They've got these pretty little pictures here that doesn't look anything like their Nine Mile Road does. I know these city planners get really creative. You know, my thinking again is, we're not even putting bike lanes on Nine Mile anyways. It makes more sense to keep it five lanes of pavement. If somewhere down the road you want to have bike lanes, we have the pavement there already. Just something to think about if you're meeting with AEW this week and MDOT or whoever, something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. Uh, Councilman DeMonico?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I'll keep this brief as possible here. Uh, I'm hoping, I'm sure a lot of you saw in the news over the weekend in the City of Detroit, the water main break that happened there. Very bad, hopefully ends up well for everybody, but I mean, there's houses with flooded basements and such from a water main break, a very large water main break. But especially the reason I'm saying that is why we do a lot of work to keep up with our infrastructure. And, you know, as much as I don't want to see any trees taken down, and we're going to save as many as possible on Grashit, they're large water mains, and they are very old. And so we need to replace those so that we don't end up having a situation like that. But yeah, I hope everything can be fixed there. I thought it was pretty impressive to hear that the City of Detroit is covering everything for everybody, like hotels and paying for fixing anything them in GLWA. I think that's the right thing to do, so, um, but yeah, just wanted to mention that. And actually, I, I brought up Nixel because I got that today, that we had a water main break on, you know, David between Ash and Topher, I guess it said, right? Hopefully, not nearly as, much smaller water main there, right? So, um, so that is good. Um, then, I guess, just like I said last time, just keep up to date with your state and federal government as much as possible. I think more important now than ever, make sure you reach out to your congressional leaders, your representative and your two senators. Um, and then also, on the 26th, make sure you watch the State of the State. Governor will be giving that on the 26th, so watch that, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Shadlick?
I'd just like to welcome the new fire chief, Jason Clark, as well as all the new members for the commissions. I'd like to welcome them and thank them for their service. That's all.
All right, Councilman Baker?
Thank you, um, thank you to everyone that came out. Hope everybody stays warm. Be careful out here, roads are, things are still icy, and if you're anywhere close to my age, you don't want to fall down. And there's a person that I refer to as my newest best friend and youngest best friend. They have a birthday coming up, and I'm just going to say happy birthday to them, even though they're not watching this. That is all that I have tonight.
Councilman Curley?
Uh, thank you. Kim's job is not a nine-to-five job. She comes here very early in the morning, I'm still in bed, and it's dark outside. And she works all day long, and then on days like this, she sits there and pays attention and, and has to do that, and fantastic job. And, um, so people don't think that she came in late because she was working late, and it's quarter after 10:00 now, she probably won't be home for a long while. So, again, uh, the jerk that I was, and I know it was a very intense meeting, but, you know, I, I've got to learn to bite my tongue and stop doing that. And again, Kim, I give you my humble apologies.
All right, um, uh, first, I just want to say thanks to everyone who's kind of stepping up and responding to calls to join commissions right now. If you are interested, please email the city, we're still looking to fill some spots. Uh, congratulations to Jason Clark. March 4th is your last meeting, right? Okay, so, for anyone who has nice things to say to or about Mariah, um, our meeting on March 4th, I would encourage you to come out and speak then. It's going to be kind of our time that we get to say goodbye, and I, I think, uh, don't miss it if you, if you want to come and share some thoughts and words you had. I'm, I'm going to prepare something to say, I'm not going to try to make you cry, but it might be one of my goals. So, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion adjourned.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes, meeting adjourned at 10:16.